Thank you, Kim.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your patience. Sorry that we were running a little bit late this evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education. It's Thursday, December ninth, 2021, our last meeting of the 2021 calendar year. And it's my pleasure to make a motion to return to public session. If I could please have a second. Thank you, Julia. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Six zero. And would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terrific. Thank you so much and welcome to members of our community who have joined us for this board meeting. Tonight, we have a few conversations that lie ahead, but first we will pause for board committee reports, which we have on the agenda this evening, and then for some board announcements. With respect to board committee reports, not sure whether audit has anything new. Thank you. And how about our facilities committee? I don't.
We're meeting next week.
Thank you. Thank you. Finance committee. I don't recall whether finance.
We're meeting next week as well.
Okay, thank you. And parent council.
We had a great meeting the other week where there were. Andrew sort of gave an update again of what had happened at the board meeting. I spoke about that. And then there were a lot of really great questions asked of particular interest, which I'm sure we'll hear more about tonight. It was kind of what's going on with COVID. You know, what are the and some clarifying questions on the policies and quarantining? Was it like a particular interest? There was some discussion around field trips and the possibility of that. And Andrew also was asked about the February break, which is always interesting. And I really appreciate the answer. If I wish I had a pre-recorded answer, maybe sort of think about like, maybe we should have some more FAQs kind of up for things that do come up a lot that are common. And it was, it was, it was a great, I think, a long, but very good discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. How about policy committee?
There is no third reading on today's agenda, but there is a first reading of a tweaked policy around how we handle people, people who don't currently live in the district are going to live in the district. It's not all tucked in in time for the school year. How is that process handled? And we clarified some of the language. We also voted to be a little bit more inclusive, including, for example, language more clear around renters and how and when they're in the process.
Great.
Read it and let us know what you think.
Thank you very much. And sustainability did meet last week. We met last Friday, December third, and I wanted to bring the board up to date on a couple of things. We had an opportunity at that meeting to talk with Danelle and with Paul Christensen and Nora Beltran, our Directors of Facilities and Transportation regarding where we are with respect to moving forward with electric vehicle infrastructure. And this is really exciting because we are really underway with our project to dot the i's and cross the t's so that we can install some electric vehicle charging stations for commuters and small transportation vehicles on the John Jay campus. So these will be at the middle school and the high school. We've been working with our vendor on all of the applicable rebates and grants. And you'll be hearing more about this in 2022. We're really excited about it. We're also awaiting results from our Cameron Cole greenhouse gas study where we were looking back to the 2018-19 school year because that was the last school year when our buildings were sort of fully in use and at capacity with our normal practices and student population. And that's going to help us benchmark for emissions in the future. And then we just continue to discuss opportunities for advocacy in the region and to celebrate and recognize the great work that's happening in part through a committee that Mary is chairing related to sustainability across our schools. And we ran out of time, so didn't get to that this past time, but we'll do that next time. That's where we are. And Putnam, Westchester, pardon me, Putnam School Board Association, several of us had the opportunity today to participate in a terrific training relating to conflict resolution and it was really well-executed webinar. And there are a couple of other nice events coming up. Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting in a week or so. And stay tuned. I think that's it for committee updates. With that, we can turn to board announcements. And I'm happy to pause if board members want to celebrate some happy student events from the past week or report out. Well, please.
I mean, I think, I don't know who else went, but and I was actually to leave before the very end, but I did attend the middle school production of Clue. And it was just really wonderful to see all of the students who are involved and the support of the staff to make it possible. And you know, I think just between the stage crew and the and the actors and how many students were actually there watching it, which I thought was so fun. I went on Saturday night and there was a lot of young people there to see their peers. And I just think it's so nice for them to have those opportunities. I think people did a great job of staying socially distanced. All the actors were in masks and it was really fun to be out at a school production. And so thank you to everyone who made that possible through anyone on the staff and congratulations to the students for just a really great job.
Thank you, Julia. So nicely said. And I know several of us were there. And I would only just add that the performance that I saw, one of the staff members who was integrally involved went out of his way to express what can only be described as like exuberance and gratitude for the opportunity to be able to work with students in person on stage. And so just really most sincere thank you to our staff members and congratulations to everybody involved in the production. It it really is great to be able to do these things again. Really terrific. And so thank you.
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to attend the KES Holiday Boutique, which was outside in the commuter lot in Katona. And the highlight was, you know, there were a number of students who had their own booths, which was fantastic and just it was such a nice feeling event with music and performances and everything like that. Other than the fact that it made me feel terribly, terribly old in the district. It's just nice to see so many young kids and so many young entrepreneurs. It was a lovely event.
Thank you. No, several of us also attended the attended the National Honor Society induction, which was made possible also by video. And so congratulations to all of our students who were inducted into the National Honor Society in between the last meeting and this meeting. And thank you again to staff for supporting that project and that organization as well. Are there any other announcements? Then Andrew, we would love to hear your announcements, please.
Thanks, Marjorie. I think also tonight's our first meeting since Thanksgiving and our last meeting before the winter break. So it's our opportunity to say to wish happy holidays. I'm going to feeling a little bit of the impact of the Thanksgiving break unfortunately and some other ways I'll touch on that in a few moments. Our second or third, the points that have been made about Clue, it was a wonderful production and lovely to be there as others have said. But also to mention that next weekend at the high school here, we'll have a production of Two Gentlemen of Verona. I think there are three performances that people could attend. So again, a really nice opportunity for people to come out and see our students and the staff supporting them to support one another. And similarly, winter sports are now underway. I had the opportunity to attend our girls varsity basketball game the other night. So similarly, they're really nice to be back in person for events and to see people in the stands and cheering our students on, which is great. I want to give an update. The last time we met, it was November eighteenth and the next day we were having a visit from Dr. Fred Volkmar from Yale University. I had introduced him that night as the Irving B. Harris Professor of Child Psychiatry, Psychiatry, Pediatrics and Psychology at Yale University and the Director of the Autism Program at Yale's Child Study Center. He's really a world-renowned figure in the field of study of autism and working with children with autism. And we really feel honored that he would come and spend time with us and has spent time with us since. We asked him to come be with us in our efforts always to be working to improve. It was a fairly open-ended invitation with allowing him to guide us. In other words, to say to him, if you were going to come and take a look at a program, what would make sense? So he proposed the nature of this visit. He spent about four hours with us on the nineteenth at the three classrooms at the middle school and the elementary and the elementary school one of the middle school to the elementary school and had time to have a debriefing with our some of our administrative staff on that day. It was, it was a very positive visit. He had a lot of positive things to say. I don't want to say too much about it tonight because he's going to have his own opportunity pretty soon. And I'm happy to announce a date shortly to speak directly with our community about about his visit. It was a pleasure to be with him that day. He has obviously great wisdom and experience in this field. And again, we feel fortunate to benefit from that. He has additionally since spent an hour, just about an hour with our staff just at the beginning of this week. That was via Zoom. He was on with about thirty-five members of our staff, all of those who are connected to the self-contained classrooms that I just mentioned. And in addition, staff from the high school as well as from Metopon, because we also have programs there that support children with autism. So they wanted, we wanted those colleagues also have an opportunity to benefit from being with him. And he spoke a little bit about his observations of the program that he had seen. He shared some of his wisdom from his research and his study and his work. And he had an opportunity to take questions and to answer some of the questions from staff. Again, a really nice, really, really nice opportunity. I can't say enough about how fortunate we feel to be working with him. He's also shared additionally resources with us for some ongoing learning for our staff. So we're thrilled about that. And as I said, he's made very positive comments about what he saw. And he said before coming in, he didn't want to reach conclusions before coming about what his work with us should look like. He wanted to come and spend time first and then have a chance to see what he thought made sense. So you know, we're still having those conversations, but but by and large, he's been extremely positive about the program, has a few constructive suggestions about space and also about working with siblings of students as well as with our families and how to provide support. But lots of positives about the staff, the way the staff work with our students, the setup of the rooms. And again, he'll share, he'll share more of that detail himself. So the upcoming event, I'm happy to announce tonight and we'll put it out in an email tomorrow. He's going to be with us again on Zoom on December twenty-first from five thirty to seven. So we'll send an invitation out tomorrow. It'll, I think it'll, we will open it up to everybody because we don't want to presume who might be interested and who might benefit. And we'll ask people to let us know whether they're able to join us at that time. And again, he'll probably follow similar format as he did with teachers, share some of his observations, share some of his expertise, take some questions. And and then we go from there as to as to what develops from that. But it's been a very positive relationship so far. And we're thrilled to be engaging with him. So that's all good news. And now I want to share a little bit of sobering news in the area of COVID. Alana was mentioning earlier. We've had, and there's a report, I think, I think my report this evening has gone out now. But just today, we reported nine new cases of COVID. And in the week from before Thanksgiving until now, that's thirty-six cases, which is a very significant uptick from the rate at which we had been reporting cases previously. That also translates into significantly more quarantines, unfortunately, as a result, particularly at the elementary schools, but even a little bit more now at the secondary schools also in terms of quarantine. So we continue to monitor that, of course. And it's, it's an enormous, obviously, in addition to an enormous impact on our students and our families, it's an enormous impact and undertaking on the on the part of the district. This is as in today, there was contact tracing going on in all five of our schools. And as reflected in the email that went out tonight, so we continue to encourage our community and all of our staff and all of our students to be mindful of all the health and safety protocols and procedures. We encourage vaccination where it's appropriate, now available for all five to eleven-year-olds. The greatest impact, well, obviously, the greatest impact being to community health and individual health. But a very significant school impact being when fully vaccinated, you're not subject to quarantine from a school-based exposure. So for for those looking to be sure that kids can continue to have as much time in school as possible, the vaccination is the is the most obvious route to get there. So you know, there, there are different reports on why this is happening. Obviously, the Omicron, there's been a lot of discussion about that in the media, whether it's an uptick because of the Thanksgiving holiday and all the travel, etc. We'll continue to watch it. We don't, we don't have any plans to to change course in how we're providing instruction or any anything like that at the moment. Although we are, you know, always thinking about how we provide for those who are on quarantine. And as the numbers increase, those those challenges increase. But we will continue with monitoring through the winter break and then immediately after winter, we'll see what comes of that, too. So not, not the most positive update I want to end, unfortunately, but excuse me, but important to keep the community informed on that. Well, thank you. That's the end of my update.
Thank you, Andrew. We really appreciate that. We're thrilled to hear about Dr. Volkmar returning this week to talk to staff. And thank you so much for sending a note out to the community tomorrow. It's really exciting that he'll be back on the twenty-first. I do want to pause in case board members have questions related to the COVID uptick or, you know, any other aspects of the impact with the district. If not, that's fine, but I wanted to briefly pause. Yeah, please.
Clarify, if you're vaccinated and you're sitting next to somebody who tests positive, they don't have to quarantine. Can you just remind me?
Yeah, the, the rules are, my colleagues, correct me if I don't, if I don't get it quite right, but because we maintain the distance in schools and because we're fully masked, that those who are fully vaccinated do not are not subject to quarantine by Department of Health. We will still report that there are, if there are close contacts, which which in school means being within three feet or on the bus within six feet. They still get reported to DOH on a quarantine list. However, they're immediately at the same time told if we have proof of vaccination, they can continue coming to school.
However, if they're tested and that's a pool, because my son had this happen to him last week. If you're tested and in your pool, somebody tests positive, you need to go, you need to leave school until they know who tested positive.
Sure. A positive test or the chance of, you know, a positive test is reason to always reason to isolate. And if in a pool test, it's initially, it's initially thought to be positive, then you'll be quarantined until it's confirmed that you either you are the positive case or you're not one of the positive. The turnaround time has been very quick on that.
I admitted my son was told to go home in the morning time. I was worried because it was during hockey tryouts. It was found out that he was negative by two o'clock this afternoon, that afternoon, and they allowed him to go to hockey tryout. So it was very quick. Thank you. But I wasn't, I wasn't allowed to bring him to the doctor myself to get tested. I was told, it's just good to know. As I said, I know he really wants to go to hockey tryouts. Can we test him at the pediatrician? And they said, no, we'll get in touch as fast as we can.
Yeah. And they do, they turn it around very quickly because it's the same sample that's taken initially, it's just tested again.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
I just wanted to, I think it's helpful to sort of enumerate a little bit what the mitigation strategies that we're using in the district again, just, I mean, it's been a while and I know you send it out in the emails, but I think it's really helpful, that story, Catherine, is helpful of just that we sort of a multi-layered process. And I was just talking to my kids this morning of like, remember last year when we were all hoping that we had a vaccine? And that we all wished that there was testing available. And like, wow, we're in a different place now. Like, it's getting a little bit scary again with the numbers going up. It was sort of alarming to hear how many kids were quarantined. But we're in a different place where we have these tools. And now it's a question of like, how do we get everybody to use those tools like vaccination? Like getting signed up for our free testing program in the schools that clearly has a quick turnaround. Like masking, which is required, but all these things together to help make sure that we can keep every kid in school, which has the best health outcomes. You know, both in terms of the health of the community, but also the student mental health, which I know is a big concern for all of us. So I think just kind of, I don't know, reminding us of like what the rules are. But and then like, is there an opportunity if parents have questions or like, where might they go to find out so that they feel they know what to do and can kind of participate in all these efforts, like getting their kids vaccinated, like getting them signed up for the testing program, which thank you for making that easier to sign up for.
I also just on a professional level, not a board level, want to make crystal clear, because I wasn't at the last meeting. That's my understanding that there was some discussion around vaccines and their role and their safety and their utility. It is a undebatable, undeniable scientific fact that vaccines reduce the risk of hospitalization or death in all of the age groups tested, including five through eleven and twelve to seventeen. Nothing is risk-free. The drive over here to come to the meeting is not risk-free for me. The, the, the weight of the benefits outweighs the risks severalfold. So if anybody has any doubt about the utility is getting vaccinated, a good idea, it's absolutely evident. Some of it is this less quarantining. It's also good to not go to the hospital or die and not part of these variants are happening because there's unvaccinated people that serve as breeding grounds for these variants.
Thank you.
Got that off my chest.
Are there any further comments before we move on to our next discussion? If not, I'd actually like to suggest that we pause for a brief recess. If I could ask for a second, please. Thank you, Catherine. And I'd like to suggest that we'll come back at eight twenty-five, three minutes from now. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Thank you so much for your patience, everybody. I think we were just about to turn our attention to item eight point oh one. And we are thrilled tonight that we have an opportunity to recognize a Bosie Student of Distinction. I'm sorry, are you?
Oh, we have to make.
Oh, pardon me. We're going to, I'm going to make a motion to go back into executives into public session, seconded by Bill. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kim. So we're at eight point oh one, which is our opportunity tonight to recognize a Bosie Student of Distinction. And we are thrilled to be able to do so. I want to just mention, the board will remember that it was actually at one of our very last in-person meetings, February sixth of 2020, that we last had an opportunity to celebrate a Bosie Student of Distinction. And at that time, Dr. Ryan and the principal of that program and other staff members huddled around our student and we were able to celebrate. We're in different times, but it is my goal to try to channel some of that positivity that Jim Ryan and Matt Tucker, the principal of this program would have brought to us this evening. I had the opportunity to speak with them. And they could not have been more excited about Mia Louis O'Keefe. And we're going to be able to watch a short video in just a moment. They emphasized that this placement has been fantastic. They spoke glowingly of Ms. McCarthy, the incredible teacher who is providing an environment in which Louis is able to really open up and be available for learning and to social interactions and to a whole new experience that has been created. In a minute, we're going to see her smile, which she brings to school every day while learning and while enjoying social engagement with her peers. Both Dr. Ryan and Dr. Tucker were extremely grateful for the partnership with Katona Lewisboro and enormously proud and happy to be able to celebrate Louis with us tonight. And I believe and hope that Cassandra McCarthy, her teacher, is watching with us. And I know the O'Keefe family is watching. And so we congratulate Louis and we are thrilled to be able to present this video. And I turn it over to Rich to help us with that. Thank you so much.
Good evening. It's a great pleasure that I join you to announce this month's recipient of the Putnam School in Westchester Boys This significant achievement for students recognized by our staff for outstanding performance. I also want to take a moment to thank you for your continued support. We value our relation to this school district, look forward to continuing to serve your needs. Now for the student of distinction award. Hi, thanks for joining us. My pleasure to recognize Mia O'Keefe from Katona Lewisboro, who is a student here at our Walden Learning Center. Mia likes to be referred to as Louis. Louis is a dedicated and hard-working student who has made significant gains since school began. Louis has consistently become a school with a smile on her face. Louis lights up with excitement when it's time to learn and is truly an inspiration to us all. She works diligently on her academic tasks and completing her assignments while working on her social skills and emotional growth, helping her become more open while sharing with her peers. With the support of her amazing teacher and classroom staff, related service providers and our behavior support team, Louis has worked to develop her own pathways to success. For all these reasons and more, we have chosen Mia Louis O'Keefe to receive the Student of Distinction Award. Congratulations, Louis.
Thank you. And thank you again to Dr. Ryan, Dr. Tucker and to Ms. McCarthy. Congratulations to Louis. And we feel very grateful to be able to honor you and your family. Congratulations. Thank you.
And thank you to the board for allowing that moment for us to have that celebration. It really is a very special moment and we appreciate it. Thank you. And congratulations, Louis.
Thank you. And without further ado, then I think we're going to move on to eight point oh two, which is an opportunity to learn more about our elementary school enrollment, full capacity, and to hear where things are holding. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. So we're just tonight going to really begin a conversation. This will be a complex conversation and tonight is just the start of it. But we want our community to know where things stand at the moment in terms of enrollment among our three elementary schools. And as you will see, there are some challenges that we'll work together as a community to sort through. So the first slide you see shows current elementary enrollment in this, in this school year. And you can see the total of twelve twenty-five. And you see right away, Increase Miller with four hundred and eighty-two students, whereas KES has three ninety-six and Meadow Pond has three forty-seven. But you see right away some discrepancy among the enrollment in the three schools. As we continue to go forward, this slide is showing our projections for next school year and also showing the projections that were made back in two thousand thirteen for the same school year. And it's, it's not a surprise that projections from that long ago would be quite different than they are today. When, when demographers are projecting out, they're not going to predict accuracy for such an extended period of time. But we think it's important for the community to see, not just that there's a discrepancy in the overall enrollment, but the discrepancy has grown significantly more, it's grown more significant at Increase Miller, where you see a difference of a hundred and fifty-nine students from what was projected. Whereas in the other two schools, you see differences of fifty-seven and sixty-three. And you see that projected number for next year of five hundred and thirteen students at Increase Miller School. And again, that's widening the distance between Increase Miller and the two other schools. And just to bring that point home, in the next slide, we point out the difference with those projected numbers. Like Katona Elementary next year would be a hundred and nine students smaller than Increase Miller. At a pond would be a hundred and sixty-nine students smaller than Increase Miller and also sixty students more, smaller than Katona. And in the next slide, if the enrollment next year were divided evenly, and that's not to say that it necessarily could be divided evenly, depending on the capacity of each school, but just hypothetically, if it were, we would be at about four hundred and twenty students per school. Bill, with the projected enrollment, Increase Miller is ninety-three students larger than that, that evenly balanced number. Katona is sixteen smaller and Meadow Pond would be seventy-six smaller than that average. Moving on. Here you see the sections that we're projecting at this time. It's, it's, it's early obviously in the year, but we already start to project out our, our needs for classroom space in the schools. And what you see here, again, a significant difference with a projection of either twenty-five or twenty-six sections, depending on how things break and what certain needs are at Increase Miller, whereas only eighteen and seventeen sections, classroom sections needed in the other two schools. Moving on, now you start to see some of the very significant challenges. And some of these challenges, we would say, are already in place at Increase Miller. So the first bullet point mentions again, the projection of twenty-five, twenty-six sections next year. This year, we have twenty-four sections at Increase Miller. And this, and the, and that's already filling all of the classroom spaces in the school. So you can imagine with twenty-four and that filling capacity, the twenty-five or twenty-six next year becomes a significant concern. In addition to Increase Miller, already small group instructional spaces and offices are being shared and common areas are being used by service providers. Not to say that that doesn't happen at all in the other schools, it's happening more so at Increase Miller. Special area programs, uh, stream, a space for a stream room is something that we've been looking at in recent years in our elementary school. We have capacity for it at the other two schools because of available space. We don't have capacity for it at Increase Miller. Additionally, uh, no stage access for instrumental, instrumental music performances and grade level performances. And, and increasingly challenging to schedule the gym because of, uh, when you're building the master schedule, the more sections you have, the more complicated it becomes to fit all of the things in. Our cafeteria space is already at capacity at Increase Miller. Now that's in part due to social distancing and the way we have individual chairs set up and they are extending onto the stage. But we can't know at this time whether social distancing will continue to be a factor next year. And if it is, the concerns become that much more significant about how we provide for lunch uh, at Increase Miller versus at the other two schools. Additionally, enrichment programs, after-school programs are made more challenging by the spec, excuse me, by the space issues, uh, as well as professional meeting spaces in the building. Because we're truly maxing out all of the available space we have. And so as a result, uh, things like important professional meetings, professional learning becomes more challenging to do those things at the school also. So that takes us to the things we need to consider. And there's a lot, oops, I went a slide too far, the things to consider. Again, a very light touch on this remote, things to consider. There are many of them. This is just the beginning. There is a new housing development that is currently under construction on Route twenty-two. I believe it has forty-something units when it's to be completed. It's a combination of one, two and three bedroom, um, units in that construction. We anticipate additional children coming to the district as a result. Currently, though, no one is yet living there and the construction isn't yet complete. Uh, we have been in truck, in, in, in touch with the developers so that we have a sense of their timeline. If it goes according to plan, it is in time for the next school year. That's an if, if it goes according to plan, some of the units will be online to next school year. And currently that space is zoned for Increase Miller. And the projected numbers that we showed earlier do not yet factor in additional children that might come from that development. So we have to consider that. We have to consider whether there are any alternative space options that we could employ at Increase Miller itself. Uh, that's been done in the past. Could it be done again? We would have to consider things, uh, such as the tolerance for increased class size at one school versus the other schools. Because one way to mitigate the number of sections is potentially to collapse uh, in a situation where we might normally make a decision to break it into more sections. Right? We stay at fewer sections in order to remain with all those students at Increase Miller. Similarly, what's the tolerance for variation in programming in one of our elementary schools versus the other two? We've for many years worked to maintain very consistent levels of programming across the three schools. So that we can always say the experience, no matter which of our schools you go to, is very, very comparable. As space becomes tighter, it becomes a little bit harder to say those things. The one that's perhaps most complex of all is the idea of rezoning, um, or some people will refer to it as redistricting uh, in order to move some children currently at Increase Miller, uh, into one of the other schools. And there might well be other considerations. This is intended just to be an introduction of this topic tonight to make our community aware of the challenge that we face. So some of the bullets there are the things that we're considering already. And we anticipate that as we bring more people into the conversation, we'll, we'll uncover other considerations that have to be made also. So the next slide is the final one in the presentation tonight, which is to say that our next step will be to invite stakeholders into this conversation. A conversation like this one, which is a conversation that communities have to have from time to time, is one that involves the community. It's a complex conversation. There isn't one predetermined outcome to a conversation like this. There are a number of different scenarios that could result, uh, but the challenge is there and in front of us. So our intention is very soon, uh, in fact, tomorrow, we'll send out a communication to inform, uh, all of our elementary school, uh, families of this challenge, since it has the potential to impact all. And then we'll, we'll look for a date to have a first stakeholder discussion in which, as you see there, we'll work to better understand the challenges, consider options, discuss mechanisms for maximizing stakeholder input, because this is the kind of conversation where you really want as much input and ownership over the decision as possible, and then consider next steps at that first meeting. So the complex conversation, a relatively short presentation to begin it, because it's just a question of putting the facts out there to begin and letting the community be aware. This is a conversation that needs to be happening, uh, in the near future, uh, in our community. So there are questions, I'm happy to take them. I don't think we put up a slide to say questions on this one, but happy to field any questions.
Thank you. Comments, questions? We really appreciate you bringing this information to us and to our community and helping us to think through it in a preliminary manner tonight. Please, Alana.
Just a quick question. Do you have a sense of the timeline of how long you think that the stakeholder engagement and when you might hope to have potential approaches?
Yeah, that, that, well, there's the hope and there's the reality, right? So, so the, the hope with budget season looming and decisions to be made, the hope would be that it's a relatively condensed timeline. Whether that's possible remains to be seen because it'll depend, you know, what options we end up putting on the table, what the reception is like, what, what the thinking is in the community is, is just, I think it's not possible for me to say at this time.
Just a quick question. With the, the other schools that aren't as crowded, there's capacity there?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I, as I said earlier, I don't know that there's, I don't want to misrepresent. I don't know that there's capacity for the schools to be divided absolutely evenly. We still have further study that we'd have to do, but there is capacity in both the schools for additional students, yes.
I, I think it is important to clarify what you just said a minute ago. And it brings us back to the last board conversation we had about budget conditions where we did hear that, you know, enrollment in the elementary schools were uneven, I think is the, is the term. That in an ideal world, this is something, you know, again, ideal is not really that it could have implications as soon as this budget season, potentially, and therefore the next school year. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this brings us to eight point oh three, which is our last presentation for the evening. I imagine we'll spend quite a bit of time on it, but I'll just mention for members of the community who maybe haven't had a chance. If you're thinking about signing up for public forum, as soon as we're finished with this presentation, we will make our way to public forum and we invite you to sign up. Again, if you haven't had a chance, I think there's a laptop in the back by the circulation desk. And in the meantime, I'm happy to turn it back to you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next presentation to come up on the screen there. We're going to switch to the report card presentation. You can.
I, I heard him say one sec.
Okay. But just by way of introduction, this next presentation is the annually required school report card presentation. We generally do it around this time of year. Uh, we wait for certain assessment data come to us, uh, as we're going to say the beginning of this one. It's a very different environment in which to be making this presentation in light of, uh, the last two years. I will lay that out on the slides and explain some, some differences in the format of the presentation. We will still be sharing the data. There we go. Thank you, Rich. So, uh, we call this, uh, student feedback outcomes and experiences because we are going to be looking at survey data that shares a lot of student feedback with us as well as outcomes, as well as we always like to include a variety of different experiences that students have in our district. Because we think, uh, the real picture of how our students are doing is more complex uh, and, and, and more layered than any, uh, particular assessment outcomes. But we also, as I mentioned, we're going to spend some time here on the context because the context for the past two years obviously has been different than anything we've previously encountered. So again, you see. I need some, I need, oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. If somebody else is better at this, I'm happy to hand it on. Okay. So this shows us, uh, a little bit of what the last two years have looked like. It may or may not be, uh, uh, very clear in our memories, uh, but we've come through a lot. Uh, in the nineteen twenties school year, schools were open and life seemed relatively normal from September through March. Very, very abruptly, March thirteenth was the date. We'll shut down and remain shut down through June of that year. Uh, we made a transition, as did the rest of the nation and the rest of the world. We're a fully virtual environment that none of us had ever really encountered before. Into, in the twenty-twenty school year, in July and August, we were fortunate that the state gave permission at the last minute for districts to open, uh, the extended school year program in person. We did that while at the same time offering a hybrid option for those who prefer to remain remote. So we had both in that environment. And then when the school year, it's when the, when the traditional school year began in September, we were in hybrid mode initially with two days per week of instruction for the majority of students and a commitment to bring our youngest students and those with greatest needs into school four days per week. And that happened progressively throughout the year. At every moment that we could, we brought more students in, but still for a very large number. It was that two days a week in school, two days a week, uh, online, and then the asynchronous Wednesdays that we remember. And that continued through into April. And then in April, May and June, we were able to bring, uh, really the majority of students back in five days a week, although a significant number continued in a fully remote option. So we still had both experiences going on. And so this is what the last two years of school have been. And we have to factor that in when thinking about things like assessment outcomes in an extremely different environment. And New York State is telling us to factor that in, uh, as we'll see more about in just a moment. Okay, so now we think about, uh, how our goals and our focus shifted in these two years as a result. Obviously, it's an emphasis on health and safety protocols like we've never experienced before in schools. That, that was last year and continues through to this year, uh, which, which changes the way schools operate. We also put an increased focus on social, emotional learning and wellness all around for our students. A significant focus on how to bring students back to school as frequently as possible, starting with the youngest and those with greatest need. And an increased focus on diversity, equity and inclusion, creating a welcoming and affirming, affirming environment for all. These are all things that were significant for logistical reasons throughout the last two years. For the taxing of capacity of school districts that we've read a lot about in the national news throughout the last two years for the, for the changing nature of what instruction and what learning looks like in schools in the last two years. Next slide. There we go. As a result, the emphasis also that we place on certain things shifts. So we put an increased emphasis on asking our students, uh, particularly during the shutdown, but it continued into the hybrid model of asking students and then in some cases, families also what was working well and what they needed more. But we surveyed students during the shutdown and again during the fall of two thousand and twenty. Our messaging to staff throughout this period was an emphasis on knowing your students well and staying alert for signs of distress. It continues to be the fact that, um, mental health issues are significant in school age populations across the country, and I'm sure throughout the world. We want to remain mindful of that. We've asked all of our staff to remain mindful of that. And that puts an emphasis on, on some things that may change an emphasis somewhere else. During the shutdown, there was a reduced emphasis on grading that was true in our district, true in many districts regionally here, uh, which has, again, has impact on how you think about outcomes. At the end of the twenty-twenty, the nineteen twenties school year, and we'll see more about this in a minute, all the state tests and standardized tests were canceled in that year. There were no assessments to be reported on. And in two thousand and twenty-one, as you'll, again, you'll see more about in the numbers themselves, significantly reduced participation in the state tests, and that's statewide as well as in our district. And, and even more significantly reduced position, participation in regents exams because the state's decision there was that there would no longer be graduation requirements at the end of last year. Simply passing the course became the graduation requirement. So, so taking the exam was, uh, much more optional. And as you'll see, that resulted in far, far fewer students participating in those exams. And now we're going to start with some survey results. And Mary, I'll, I'll be happy to hand over to you at this moment, if that's okay. I'll keep trying my best with the slides here.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mary.
So our survey results for our senior survey, um, it was conducted after the AP exams. So we do have, and if Andrew, you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. The response rate was significantly lower, but we really did not want to prevent students from participating fully in instructional classes, um, prior to the AP exam. So, you know, we did give continual reminders, but obviously they're involved in internships and some other things. But some patterns did seem to be consistent throughout. But some patterns did seem to be consistent throughout. And that was about thirty five percent of the class. So this first question, the percent of students who agree or strongly agree with the following statements. Um, and you can see some of the things there. My classes give me useful preparation for what I plan to do in life. But we learn in classes necessary. High school teaches me valuable skills, and adult helped me plan for life after high school. But the the results are very similar. To the last year, there are some drops, and I think you'll see this kind of pattern throughout in many of the surveys and. Even in some of our assessment data, there are some ups and downs. I think, you know, to Andrew's point. These results all raise more questions for us. In terms of what else does this mean? What other questions might we ask of the data? So we don't necessarily think that every time we see an increase, it's very good news, or we see an increase, it's very bad news. We just need more context. So um, you'll see some ups and downs there, but it is nice to see that final number. I'm getting a good education at K L S D. Seventy seven percent. The next slide. So the question is during your high school years, how involved were you in the following activities at John Jay High School? Uh, not outside of school. So you see lots of participation in athletics. Music was down a bit, but there were fewer opportunities when you think of all the social distancing. Restrictions that we had. So again, you see some of the patterns stay very similar across all of the different activities. But there, those are places that are worth noting. The next question is please rate the quality of your instruction and then. Level of intellectual engagement specifically at John Jay High School in the following areas. So this is, you know, an interesting question when you think about high school seniors, right? Their level of intellectual engagement. Are they interpreting that as more difficult? Are they interpreting that as really being fully engaged and passionate and in that state of flow? So again, asking lots and lots of questions. You know, some of the thing areas were down, some subjects were up. But again, we, you know, we look for trends over time, so a smaller sample size. Knowing all the parameters and restrictions around COVID. I think we just need to look at this in light of several years and continue to ask some questions. Get more data. On this next slide, it's the percent of students who said most teachers I had for class at John Jay High School. And then some of the stems make school interesting for me, pay attention to all students, really care about me. Explain things in a way I can understand. Tell me how I do on classwork tests and homework assignments, so that feedback piece. Um, and the last two numbers again, you know, when we think about social emotional wellness. It's nice to see they know who I am and treat me with. Those are our numbers that hopefully will continue to stay strong. We did add a few new questions, so this would be baseline data. There's nothing to compare it to, but thinking about our work on diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, we thought it was important to ask some of these questions. These are things that came up. In conversations throughout the year, so we also asked these questions on our graduate survey as well. So this first question, did you experience a welcoming and affirming environment that felt safe during your time at K L S D? And you can see the numbers there. Um, again, you know, reading comments and things like that is very important and getting a little more context around this. Hopefully in the future, we can even have some focus groups around these questions. The next one is, did you find yourself represented and reflected, treated with respect and dignity in and out of classes?
I went to again, sorry. Did it go back?
I can just read those numbers if you'd like. Oh, there it is.
Oh. There's a delay, I think, on this. First one.
That's it. So there we had eighty percent saying yes, and sometimes. And then. The final new question that we asked. Did you feel the environment ensured that all cultural identities were affirmed, valued and as used as vehicles for teaching and learning? And then we specified those identities were defined as race, ethnicity, age, gender, sexual orientation, disability. Language, religion, socioeconomic background. Um, and you can see the numbers there, so a little more variation in those numbers.
Yeah, which can be helpful to us into knowing where, you know, where there's room for growth and when we see some new questions.
Okay. Now we go into our graduate survey. So each year we, in the spring, usually in May. Uh, we send out a request to our recent graduates. So after their freshman year in college, we're asking them to now reflect after having been in college for a year. On their experience here at Kato Lewisboro and how well it prepared them. So we had fifty eight respondents, which was only twenty four percent of the class. That's not very unusual, like the year before we hit sixty five. Um, we do send out reminders over the summer, but as you might imagine, it's hard to ensure that we're reaching all students. So on this slide, you can see the results um, for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And we asked students, my high school did a good or excellent job at and asked them to check all that applied. Some of the things were actually conflicting messages. Confidence to set high goals went down, but encouragement of independent thinking was kind of steady. Writing research papers and oral communication skills was higher.
Mary, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I think I'm on the wrong slide again. Are you reading from this one now or the next one?
Oh, I was on the next. I apologize.
That's all right. Did you touch on this one?
No. Should I else? I'll go back to this one then.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Sorry, uh, the question here was how prepared were you to do the following in your academic work at college? And these are students who answered prepared or very prepared. They've, in this slide, it seems they were best prepared for working effectively with others, although that went down a bit. From twenty nineteen. But again, you wonder about the experience that these students had as freshmen in college. And what were the opportunities to work collaboratively? And were those opportunities in person or were they remotely? So just really interesting to think about. Learning effectively on your own, about steady at seventy five percent. That's interesting. No, you went to. Okay, and this is the slide I was starting to speak about before. Sorry about that. And I was mentioning some of the the messages that seem a little bit conflicting there about writing. Understanding of the college process was down, yet ensuring that the right high school courses were taken was up. So it's interesting. So we have to look at this, you know, in conjunction with other information that we have. Other questions on the same survey, looking back at when these students, you know, answer their senior survey questions as well. And again, always looking for patterns and trends. The next one. So how satisfied with you with where your with your high school experience? Again, it's, you know, upsetting to see that number decline. And yet we don't know, you know, the impact of COVID on that as well. The end of their senior year certainly was very, very different. And then some of those new new questions were asked again, the one about the welcoming and affirming environment that felt safe. Bringing the time at K L S D, so a little different than our seniors. It's a not as positive. And then uh, finding yourself represented and reflected with respect and dignity in and out of classes. Also a little more variable there.
And that third new question we did ask, but we had a technical glitch in their responses.
Yes.
So we're not able to unfortunately to present that data.
Yes. So the last data we'll speak about this evening is challenge success survey data. So last April, you'll remember uh, right before we shut down, it was actually the week of March ninth. We did challenge success surveys um, with our middle and high school students and with middle and high school parents as well. And. We just finished, and I think parents actually were answering through the first few weeks of shutdown. So we looked at those results. We reviewed them last year with the board. But we wondered how different they might be. Um, and continue our conversations and partnerships with challenge success. And they offered this updated mini survey, so it was kind of a condensed version, just some of the questions that they had asked before in April. So we had about sixty six percent of our middle school students, and it was just for students, by the way. And uh, forty four percent of our high school students participating in this survey. So you you may remember this, they asked these questions, they asked students to rank their major sources of stress. And they were very similar from year to year, and they're also very similar middle to high school. But the major source continues to be all times at all grade levels, grades, tests, quizzes. Finals and other assessments, so that that is a big stressor. Overall workload and homework continue to be big stresses. And it starts to vary a bit depending on the grade and the. Survey that we gave, things like a lack of time to play, relax or be with friends, lack of sleep. Procrastination uh, for our high school students, college and university, a little bit higher in twenty twenty one. Sometimes a lack of uh, specific class or classes was another piece. It's worth noting that the number seven source of stress this time around in numbers for middle school and number six for high school was mental health concerns. So anything to do with anxiety or depression, that was also another source of stress for our students. And then this question was about the percent of students who feel they have an adult at school that they can go to if they have a personal problem. So the numbers are fairly similar from year to year. You know, and they identified who they would go to first, so the first person they would go to is a teacher. Then followed by guidance counselors, psychologists or social workers. Athletic coaches or assistant coaches and then other staff. So overall, for our survey data, that really helps us to know. A lot more about the social emotional well being of our students. And as I said before, it really raises questions for us, you know, what things do we really need to look out for? When we think about all those stressors, grading, tests, homework. These are things we want to think about more, and I think that, you know, even. Worldwide, the conversations around COVID have been around these values, right? What's really important in the learning process and what do we perhaps need to reconsider? So now we'll take a look at some of our assessment data. And just to speak a little bit about how we use it and the goals of using assessment data. We want to better understand the student experience in order to improve instruction and improve learning. So the kind of reports range from this kind of reporting to all of you. Also, the individual student reports that many of our parents receive. In terms of state tests or even local tests, students who might be um, considered for additional supports. Um, and these some questions there that you can see, questions that teachers and administrators might ask. So, you know. These assessments, and we have to look at all of them and look at it holistically. But they do influence our thinking about resources, about curriculum, about strategies, about professional learning. Even when it comes to budget, it starts to influence some of our thinking about what's needed and where we need to invest. There are some of the actions that we take around the data listed there. Um, I think it's really important to note the first one, using multiple measures. To assess student understanding, especially in a year like this. Where there are changes in many of the assessments, they look very different. So we need to think about multiple measures so that we can get that accurate picture of student performance. So this slide just summarizes some of the pandemic's impact, especially on the state assessments. So, you know, during the shutdown, there were no tests given in grades three through eight that year and no regents exam. Last year, the year we're reporting on this evening. The participation rate across the state was forty percent. Um, and the state really asked us to look for ninety five percent for accountability. Which is very high. That's not typically what we have here. But we were much lower this year, but we'll we'll talk about that on the next slide. Participation rate was significantly higher in some districts and significantly lower in others. So there were some districts where just a few students took tests. And others where many or most of the students took the test. I think most significantly, they were shortened from two days, which had been a change from two years prior from three days. They went down to two, and last year they were just one. And the one day was all multiple choice. Whereas in the previous year, there was one day that was extended responses, so students could explain their thinking. For some students, that actually helped. They might find it easier, especially if writing is a challenge. Um, and for some students, it appears it made it more difficult. Regions exams also were removed as a graduation requirement. So the participation was much lower in regions exams. And NISID has warned us about making comparisons year to year because it really is not comparing apples with apples. It's very, very different. And on the next slide, you'll see the participation rate. So you can see that, you know, we're usually around eighty five percent of students participating. Um, and that dropped significantly last year. We were more in the range of sixty four, sixty five percent. The next slide will show you the regions. So when you think about numbers of students who participated, you can see this is a very drastic difference. And we will report on the two that had the participation over twenty students. That is a very, very different number. So we wanted to show you some other measures as well. So we use Ames Web Plus. That is a standardized norm referenced assessment that we give in reading and mathematics. It's one indicator of academic performance, but it helps us, you know, have a big picture view. Of um, students in relationship to peers when we think about, you know, how they relate to peers across the nation. Those national norms are really helpful to us, but when they are identified by Ames Web Plus, we take a closer look with other assessments. So you can see that, oh, and last year we presented this data for the first time in absence. We didn't have any three eight data uh, to present to you last year, so we thought that this might be the most helpful. So we looked at students who are in the average, above average or well above average ranges according to those national norms. And so you can see it's not very, very different from year to year. It looks fairly similar. I would say those aren't significant changes. But there's something that we always look at. Obviously, when you. Look at individual student data or even in a class or a grade level, you look more closely for patterns and trends. It is interesting, there was a national study on N W E A, which is a similar assessment. That's given in many schools and. They were doing a study on COVID slide. And they found that nationally, and this was last fall, students fell about five percentage points in math. But generally, in the aggregate at least, held steady in reading. So it's interesting when you think about math instruction and how sequential it is. It does make some sense, right? So if there was something that you did not learn or learn as well. It could be a real gap for you, so it's sometimes very difficult to assess and identify those gaps. Whereas in general, you're reading and writing and listening and speaking all of the time in all subject areas. So there's more opportunity for those gaps to be filled. And now we'll take a look at some of the results of our New York State assessments. And as we've mentioned before, and this isn't different, the state gives us four levels. Levels one, two, three and four, three being where we consider proficient. Level four is excelling. Level two, they consider partially proficient in the Common Core learning standards and on track still. But we generally only look at levels three and four as proficient. This is our three eight ELA data, and you can see those participation rates there. And then the percent of students receiving a three or a four in grades three through eight. And so there's some.
Oh, I wound up Matt's, sorry, Mary, were you going to speak to the ELA?
Yes, well.
I'm busy, Eli.
Okay. So, yeah, obviously, you know, you see some variation in grades there. But again, it's very hard to say that we can compare even from year to year, and the state is actually asking us not to do that. We'll look at the math. You got it. So the math, you know, as you can see, those middle school grades are lower, you know, in particular, the eighth grade, it is of note that many of the students in eighth grade take algebra. And many of them took the algebra Regents instead of this. So there's a portion of the population that's actually not, or presumably chose not to take this. They do have the option of taking both. But many of them took the algebra Regents, which we'll show you in a minute. That's the next slide there. So of the ones who chose to take the Regents, obviously very high, those were the only two tests where more than twenty students were tested. Algebra and Earth Science. So looking to some other ways that we monitor student progress. At high school, one is the graduation rate, which has remained very strong over time. And you'll see some pictures there from Palisades Park last June. Jonathan Franz was our valedictorian and Remington Sandel was our salutatorian. And we have our National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, Liliana Kara and Jonathan Franz. Yeah, thank you. So these are advanced placement, a summary of the AP exams from May of 2021. So it's interesting to note that they were administered, some were online and some were administered here at school. That was difficult with social distancing, quite honestly. So some of the smaller ones were administered here at school, whereas some where there was more participation were administered at home. We had four hundred seventy students taking one thousand twenty-two exams. So you can see the results there.
Mary, this is actually an area where participation went up from the prior year. Prior year, the APs were given, but they were entirely online.
Yes.
And numbers went down quite a bit. This year, the numbers participating came back up.
Yes.
A little bit close to where they typically are.
Yes, there were, I think, three hundred ninety-one in the prior year, and now we have four hundred seventy, so many more students taking them again. And so these are the the threes, fours and fives broken down, as well as the percent of KLSD students who got threes, fours or fives and compared to the national average in the right-hand column. So you'll see that many in this slide are higher than the national average. Last year, I think, but the lower participation, these were optional. So right in the midst of COVID, many more students took the test this time around. So you know, you could ask a lot of questions about that as well. It was optional, I think, students who felt really good about taking them. Ones who took the test. On the next slide. Some others, the ones with the asterisk are the ones that were given here at John Jay High School. The others were taken it online at home. So again, lots of, you know, variation, ups and downs from the, some higher than the national average, some lower. Obviously, that's of concern when it's lower, but we always want to ask the good questions about that and think about the overall experience.
Can't see this slide is chemistry at the top?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one.
The vision test is given at home.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are we moving on?
Yes, thank you. So some other aspects of the school experience that we want to showcase as well, athletics, arts, some of our internships and showcases and competitions. So here are some pictures from our athletics program this year or last year, rather. We had twenty-six Scholar-Athlete Team Awards, and that means that there was a GPA of ninety or higher for seventy-five percent of the teams. That's quite an accomplishment, especially with the strong commitment that being on an athletic team brings along with it. Go to the next one. So then we have some stream highlights. So just reminding everyone, stream is science, technology, research, engineering, arts and mathematics. So some of our showcases and competitions, you can see there, the Bedford Green Light. There were virtual science fairs, the FTC Robotics Competition, Math Counts, Science Olympiad. So we had on the slide there, Grace Mango and Eliza Ween, two of the students whose work was recognized in the it's Westchester Rockland Junior Senior High School Research Symposium in 2021. The virtual Bedford Green Light competition, we took second place. You see a student from KES, they're their virtual science fair. He was showing how sea salt moved to ice. And then two medalists in the Science Olympiad, we also had this year as well. So lots of things happened virtually, some things happened in person. But it's good to see that they were all happening. The next slide is about performing arts at high school. We had the Laramie Project in January that was on Zoom. Then Changes, which was an ethno drama that had in-person rehearsals, but the performance was on Zoom in June. And then Rumors was student-directed spring comedy, and that was in person, also in June of 2021. So we had a real mixture there. And this is just a slide that shows many of our senior internships. So you see the participation in senior internships is very, very strong. So most students do participate in some form of senior internship. Last year was about ninety-four percent of the class. And the year before, we had projects instead of traditional internships when most of them were not possible. And the prior year in twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, in twenty eighteen, nineteen, rather, we had ninety-seven percent of the class participating. It has been going up steadily. And moving on to middle school performing arts, we had Pump Boys and Dynets recorded live, streamed and in person for parents in June of 2021. And our music program and performing arts, it was difficult to have the kinds of concerts and performances that we typically have. NISMIA had a virtual solo festival. There was a winter conference, but there was a John Jay Middle School Rock the Holes concert back in June. And then finally, for visual arts, the Young Artist Show at the Cottone Museum of Art in February. So there you see some seventh grade social justice comic books that our students were working on. In the middle, you see students learning how to properly photograph their art for their digital portfolios. And then some of our Visual Arts Club doing some sharing. So although it was challenging to think about how we share all of that wonderful work, people were coming together and sharing it. So it was really nice to see.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah. Thank you. We really appreciate all of the work to coordinate this overview and also thank you for your dedication to interviewing our students and graduates and for continuing to engage them in reflection around their experiences in our school district. I think that's something relatively unique that we do and understandably, participation rates are different, but really important to keep up the effort. And thank you for that piece as well. And, you know, really important to think back over all of the shifts that have occurred in the past couple of years and the impact on our opportunity to collect assessment information. Helpful to get a look at it and really appreciate the opportunity to engage in some conversation. So thank you. And I'll turn the floor open to board colleagues, please, Bill.
As always, I think we shouldn't gloss over in any way that I applaud the dedication and approach in doing this. Surveying your high school students, asking them questions. So how we're doing is no mean feat. Ditto with going more than the bare minimum you have to in terms of data and various outcomes. I applaud that. I think it's a great model of how continuous improvement is supposed to be. And so in terms of teaching by, you know, modeling behavior, I think that's exemplary. I just have some quick points and I do have two questions, but they're extended answer, not multiple choice. I, I, I think it's absolutely true that because of the response rate and so many other things being different this year, it is, I think, inappropriate to compare year to year. Other than, I think, if there are certain patterns that continue, and you know, this is the fifth year in a row of that, that might be more of a true signal. And then, as you said, you know, then reacting to the signals is the key. In some ways, it was remarkable, there wasn't more change. So many of the things were fairly in the same ballpark. I guess if less people take it, but it's the same slice of people, maybe you'll get similar answers. I do, at some level, at least for some of the numbers, if you're going to talk about things going up or down, you do have to get into statistical significance because otherwise seventy-seven might look different from seventy-four, but it's not a real difference. And it depends on the sample size and other things. So at least to some degree, that I think that would help isolate the numbers that aren't different, the things that are changing. I'd also watch the compound questions. I think some of the new questions are great, but they ask was A, B, C, D and E good or bad? And suppose C was good and A was fine, you know, to either break it up into separate questions or somehow make it that it's it's a answer, one answer, one answers the others in the same direction. And then I would encourage us to present the data as you did here, but also slice out the higher achieving. So percentage who got a three and a four is nice. How many got a four? You know, who was average, above average, well above average in the Ames Web is nice. Also want to see who's above average, well above average. It's a thinner comb. You know, especially for our district, I think it'll be a more sensitive measure of how things are going. And then the two questions I have, one is just very mundane, is that for the graduation rate, what's the denominator? Is it within four years of, like, isn't there an official thing, like it's the percentage of high school students who start in ninth grade who graduate within four or five years?
Yeah, I think it's within.
Cohort, I believe.
Yeah.
It's on a cohort model.
A cohort, yeah. But I know there are different, there are some variations in how that is reported and looked upon. So okay, we'll try to clarify that.
I'm fairly certain ours is a four-year graduation rate.
All the more impressive then. And then in addition to following the ups and downs, as always, I think you guys are very good at pursuing that. My final question would be, do you have a sense of what the story is going to be for this spring? How much back to normal versus the same as last year versus some new, we don't know yet?
In terms of state testing, we don't know. I think we're making the assumption that we're going back to the way things were. It's really interesting with the ELA and math tests in particular. So next year is supposed to be the last year that the states will, the tests will be based on Common Core state standards and now move to next generation standards in the following year. So the presumption is that those tests will change. So they'll have this year, the twenty-two tests. And then the twenty-three tests will be something different. So that's interesting and more, they're pushing us more and more to do computer-based testing. And there were so many problems with that in the past. So we'll do whatever pilot testing. But our overall testing will not be computer-based testing.
All the big stakes testing now, you know, college and, you know, SATs and MCATs and other tests, a lot of them are online.
Right. So it's interesting, you know, we didn't have to make that leap right now. And we felt like with all the changes, you really couldn't compare. It would be another reason not to compare. But we will be moving in that way. And we do, we are doing some research to prepare because we know it's coming. But that is interesting too, when you think about, especially in math. Students really feel that need to kind of draw the problem. There is some research around that. So it, it will be interesting to see how that goes.
Mary, I think it's, I think it's also true, though, the New York State has applied for a waiver to the federal government again for the accountability factor on the state test. So whether that happens and whether it has any meaning for us, it's not clear at this point. It may not have any meaning for us.
And the Regents, I was struck by how reduced it was. I know it wasn't required, but it's like a lot of people just garrisoned it very quickly. I wonder if that's going to be reintroduced or this year.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure. And, and the rule was if you were passing the course, then you didn't have to take the Regents exam. Yeah. So I think if students felt assured that they were passing the course, but I also think that students who knew they could do really well. Obviously, those numbers were so strong. So I think those were the students who chose to take it.
Absolutely. But wonderful stuff. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Other comments, questions?
I really appreciated both the qualitative and quantitative sort of assessment tools that you're using, and particularly the focus at this moment on knowing students and that sort of that refocus at this moment in time on the relationship between a teacher and student and that being so important to learning. My question, I noticed a lot of the data, the way that it's presented is sort of where we're at, at level, at expectation and above. And I was just curious how, what our approach is to sort of students that are falling below and kind of not meeting those standards. And how do we direct resources or how do you sort of read into that?
So in academic areas, if they're falling below, generally what happens is we will look at them with, with this part of our RTI plan. So we have some assessments that are given to all students and then others that are given to students. If you're, say, below on Ames Web, then we'll follow up with an independent reading inventory or a writing sample, you know, and looking at classwork. And so that will determine services typically. And that usually happens kind of in a big picture way in the fall, usually at early October. It happens again mid-year. And then there's some meetings again at the end of the year when we do those end of year assessments. But in between, there are always, at each school, there are RTI meetings. So if a student comes up in between those testing periods and say, they really weren't showing up in the fall, but now that I've had the opportunity as a teacher to be in class with this student, I'm now getting more and more concerned and I need to bring them to the RTI teams. That's usually some clinicians are on that team, an administrator, the classroom teacher and the interventionist. But we also have, so part of that is also social emotional interventions, which we also, you know, worry about a lot and think about more. We had a meeting of our Social Emotional Wellness Committee last week. And we were talking about those kind of tier one interventions. So not necessarily when a student has to go out of the classroom to see a clinician. But what can the teacher do in the classroom to help students regulate emotions, to work through frustration? to work through frustrations, things like that. So it's, there are things in place. And I think our faculty are really great at thinking about coming together and talking through, you know, what's happening with a student, trying to really understand and know the student well, but also looking at multiple data points and multiple sources of information.
Do you have other questions, Ilana? Okay, thank you. Mary, if I heard you correctly, when you were speaking about the NWEA, you mentioned that that's given in many schools. And I just wondered if you could comment on whether, do any schools use Ames Web Plus in addition to NWEA?
Typically, it's one or the other or some other tool like that, that gives that kind of standardized norm-referenced information.
Okay. Yes. And is there a reason that we use one or the other? Are there, are there preferences? Do people have reasons, you know, when a district uses one or the other, is there some reputation or something that one of these tools, I'm just trying to understand how a district decides?
We've been using Ames Web and then Ames Web Plus for quite a few years, I believe about ten years in this district. And so they both give a similar type of information. I'm not as familiar, I have not given NWEA or I'm not as familiar with it. So it's interesting. Some colleagues have been bringing, I think that study kind of highlighted it, but I think they're similar in the type of tool they are. But each has strengths and weaknesses, thinking about like subtests and things like that and what they can hopefully provide.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've heard about Ames Web Plus for a while, but you know, the NWEA was new and I, I think I'm just interested in that because the N value for the Ames Web Plus testing was so high. And I'm not even sure how did we get that level of participation? I remember that with the state tests, they were only offered to students who were in person in school. So like out of the gate, the test-taking population excluded anybody who was home for a hundred percent of the time. How did we get the same level of participation for our Ames Web data compared to previous years? And, and it feels like such a great opportunity to have data with a good N value, I imagine. And that's why I was asking about NWEAs, like this feels like a treasure trove compared to, I mean, to the extent that we're interested in these measures. We've got a much healthier N value here than anywhere else, except for one other place that I'll get to in a second. If you can comment on that.
And I think part of it is that we were able to give it on the computers and, you know, push it out remotely to iPads. So we were able to
The kids could take it from home.
So students who were remote students were able to take that. And there's a whole testing app that shuts down other apps on the iPad. So it's, it's a little complicated in a technical way, but it did allow us to reach more students.
That's great. We're lucky. And the other N value that I just wanted to comment on, or really participation rate is more, I guess what it's about is the number and the percentage of students who are doing the senior internships, that is such a high number and it has been high now for a few years, but especially to think about what's gone on in recent times and that we're able to provide internship opportunities for two hundred and forty students. And also to point out that over five years, we basically doubled the number of internships. And I think I bring that up because from my perspective, that really creates hopefulness around cultural change that can be affected if we really set our mind to it. And it raises the question and the possibility, like what other cultural changes might we try to affect in our elementary schools and our middle school and high school? But this really was a very dedicated conversation about what used to be called, but nobody even talks about it anymore, senior slump, where after the AP exams, you know, students checked out. And to look back five years ago, and I don't have it up, but the number was like a hundred and, I don't know, something forty. And, you know, we basically doubled it in five years. That's really amazing. That's a testament to just, you know, somebody or a variety of people really keeping their eye on the ball and trying to think about what's best for students. And it's exciting that we're doing that and very hopeful to think about other ways in which we can affect cultural change if we read the signals and pay attention to the data and figure out, you know, what our community values and where we're trying to go.
And such a credit to so many local businesses.
Yes.
Different aspects of the community. When I look at the list of all the different places our students intern.
Yes.
It's really impressive and so varied. So, you know, it's, it's a credit to the whole community that we were able to do that.
Yeah.
I think, I think I remember it wasn't so many years ago that we had some of those students come back and talk about the experience, right? They spoke so glowingly about it.
Maybe we could do that again. That, that was terrific. I remember, yeah.
Specifically like someone who was, became an EM, did EMT training during that time.
Yeah. And it is, it's such a healthy sign of the partnership with our community and the variety of enterprises that are represented in our community industries. So that was really great to see. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on, if you haven't updated all, is the region's exams, because that came up in conversation and obviously last year, the participation rate was really low and the state didn't even require them. But my sense is that there's an even bigger conversation happening around the future of region's exams and the state at one point before the pandemic, I thought was looking to alternative pathways to graduation. And I'm really not sure whether that's stalled or whether that's very active right now. But I feel as if, you know, once you experience a real disruption in your practice, like two years running, the likelihood that it's going to fully come back online seems diminished. So I wondered if you have a sense of what's happening and your colleagues talking about that?
I don't think we do. I think, I think it might be fair to characterize the current Board of Regents as being a group that's not particularly pro those assessments, but I also don't.
Pro regions?
Not for regions exams. And, and at the same time, I think as in so many other places, I think capacity is such that I don't know that that's a focus at the moment. You know, I don't know that they're able to carry that initiative forward.
And then just while we're on the regions, it was confusing to me that the algebra and earth science data, which was, you know, great, but why is it characterized as three, four, five? I thought that was on a scale of zero to a hundred percent. So I was not understanding that.
That's a, that's a change just in how we were able to gather and capture the data. So the tests do still result in that numerical number.
Okay.
But New York State translates that into a three, four, or five. We don't typically report it that way. But this year it was all we had access to, I believe.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wasn't aware. And on that same note, has the state even released statewide three-to-eight data?
If you go on the, their website, data.nisad.gov, you can see all the, the breakdowns, but they are not comparing students to, or, you know, districts to other districts or, you know, districts to state. And that's on purpose.
Interesting. Thank you. Wonderful. Really. I mean, that's such a deep dive. We understand how resource-intensive this presentation is. We really appreciate that you were able to pull this together. I'm sure this was a team effort. And it's really important and helpful for us to see. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Mary.
Hi. Welcome back in. And I think this brings us to public forum. So we're at nine point oh one. And it's my pleasure in just a moment to invite community members to speak with us. Again, we request that you please try to keep your remarks to about three minutes and please introduce yourselves and let us know who you are and where you live in the community. And if you have children in our schools, we won't be engaging in back and forth because we really do view this as our opportunity to listen to public comment. And so thank you for your patience and I think we're ready to start. And the first person is Michael Novick, please.
Hello. My name is Michael Novick and I'm a resident of Katona. And I've had three children go through KAL schools from beginning to end. I'm upset to hear about the problems within the special education system and confused as to why review and change has not occurred. I'm also an occupational therapist working at Southern West Chester BOCES and a member of the crisis intervention team. I thought I would be helpful to hear how behavior management and restraints when needed occur. I'm just having trouble breathing with this mask on and talking at the same time, so I'm sorry. So we, we utilize TCIS at Southern West Chester BOCES and it's a team approach. Where five to six team members are trained with a week-long inter-intervention. And then they come back and they, yeah, no, I'm fine. It's just so.
That's fine. We can hear you just fine. Please feel free to continue.
Thank you. So every summer they go, every other summer they go and they get retrained on crisis intervention. They come back and they train staff members who desire to be part of the team. It's all voluntary. And those members go for a, a week-long intensive, about thirty hours of training. And then every year they redo the training. The core element of the approach is de-escalation. And the, the techniques include listening and validating feelings, giving choices to give, give time to process and decide, give the individual an opportunity to redirect and give positive activities. And then if needed, removing the classroom from the environment rather than the student. Also in TCIS, we work with classroom teachers to be proactive in order to educate and avoid problem behaviors. And again, it's a collaborative approach. And it helps with the demands of the teachers in the classrooms and we give knowledgeable support within the classrooms. Important to note is that restraint is a last resort. And it happens only if the child is a danger to himself or others. Restraints don't occur for people throwing things or being disruptive and loud in class. And only if we have, only if we have exhausted the de-escalation process is a restraint used again, only if they're a danger to themselves or others. Restraints, when they're used, the child is examined by the school nurse after every event. The parent is informed after every event. The restraint is documented and TCIS members will meet and they'll go over the FBA, the BIP and anything that could have been done differently during that, that occasion. So the TCIS model is emphasized with support and teaching coping skills. Most importantly, it's been effective within SW BOCES. And I've seen a significant reduction in the number of times we've had to use restraints. So thank you for letting me speak about this.
Thank you. Jacqueline Klein, please.
My name is Jacqueline Klein. I'm a longtime resident and speech-language pathologist and special educator. I spoke at the November fourth meeting. I'm here again tonight to address the comments during the board dialogue after the public forum had ended that evening. I have listened to the board's dialogue on YouTube several times now. First of all, thank you to Mrs. Schneider for your ability to read the room and understand how parents are feeling. So grateful for that. In terms of the comments of the other board members, it seems that you could not understand why parents were angry or afraid. You were not sure of why parents were getting up here to speak and relating upset repetitively. It really is apparent and has been quite clear for many months. The incidents that have occurred have been quite serious. For eight months now, there has been little, if any, response. Can you imagine if you were concerned about the welfare of your child? You spoke to your concern, but had no response over and over again. Would that build confidence? Would it build trust or faith? No, it would understandably cause further distress, anger, growing mistrust and fear. It's understandable. I know it's cliche, but put yourself in these parents' shoes. Imagine putting your child on the bus each day, a child that cannot tell you in any way about what happens during that day. Put yourself in their shoes. I bet you would feel some nerves at the very least. Now imagine needing to put your child on the bus to school, knowing about these issues that have occurred in our special ed classrooms. Of course, there is anger, fear, mistrust, all normal and all exacerbated, exacerbated by the lack of response and communication from this board. Response and communication would sound like, here are the steps we are planning to take. Here is the scope and depth of our plan. Here is how we will communicate with parents and parents may be involved. Besides the inability to read the room and understand the upset on November fourth, there were certain comments made by Dr. Rifkin during the board's dialogue that were hurtful to me personally as a community member and I believe to us as a community. I listened to it several times to be sure of what I was hearing. He conveyed that only the parent of the child who was involved in the issue should speak up. And he seemed to say that others speaking were more, that others speaking up were more representative of hearsay. He said about listening to all the parents speak at the last meeting that, quote, "Much of the discussion and the examples is not their child." It's, "I heard that," or "my kid was here and did fine, and I am very concerned that I heard all this horrible stuff." It would be most helpful to speak of their own personal experience. He continued, quote, "It has to be my kid. Here's what I think happened." He said, quote, "It's not appropriate to talk about it if it's not your kid." That was unreal to hear from a board member. Are we supposed to care only about ourselves and our own in this world? Of course not. We as human beings support each other and stand up for what we believe is right. Standing up for one another is what we teach our children from the beginning. And from a historical perspective, it is what has changed our world for the better. It shouldn't have to happen to you for it to matter to you. I repeat, it shouldn't have to happen to you for it to matter to you. The issue of behavior management, as well as the literacy concerns brought up for years, both matter. Please don't just tell us that you are engaged and caring about these issues. Show us. Respond with the seriousness that these issues warrant. Communicate with the people of your community. It was nice to hear some bits about Dr. Wolfmar's visit tonight. But it was the first time, I think, that details of any sort were given in, for the last eight months. It, I still have questions and I'm sure some of the parents do. What was the scope and depth of Dr. Wolfmar's involvement? What records has he been provided to review? When did he or will he meet with concerned parents? What steps are being taken right now to review the special education programs? What steps are being taken right now to improve behavior management? Thank you.
Thank you. Bea Miller.
I was going to bring a stool and I totally forgot. The first time I met Oksana's son Lev, a thirteen-year-old boy who is non-verbal, was this past September. A group of us were sitting outside when Lev came out and sat across from me. I introduced myself and asked him if he liked to swim. In response, he got up out of his chair, walked over to me, put his hand on my face and gently turned it toward the pool. Then he pointed to himself, pointed to the pool and touched his heart. He could have just nodded his head yes or ignored me. But instead, he chose to connect with me and communicate. He answered me in a complete sentence, as we teach our children to do. And yet, I've come to your proverbial house eight or nine times recently. I've asked you questions much more important than if you like to swim. I've offered you the opportunity to engage in dialogue via a town hall. And with the exception of Ms. Schneider, you have yet to communicate with me or other parents in the same way a thirteen-year-old boy without spoken words did the very first time that he met me. So tonight, I'm going to try something a bit different. I'm going to spend the remainder of my time simply asking you questions. You don't have to take notes. You don't have to take notes because I've printed out several copies of my questions and I will hand them over to Ms. Monzon and you can have them available to reference during board dialogue. I'll begin. Why haven't you reached out to ask us about our concerns and what policies we'd like to see changed or created? That's what elected officials do. If US senators can reach out to their constituents, so can you. Why haven't you put our issues on your agenda anytime during the last eight months? What are you doing to determine if there is a systemic issue in the special education department? What is actually preventing you from beginning or authorizing an independent audit of the special education department? Do you ever reach out to the teachers, both special ed and gen ed, individually to ask them what kind of support and training they want or need? Do you ask them for their feedback? I'm not talking about their principals or the administration, I'm asking you regarding the teachers themselves. On Tuesday, the US Surgeon General issued a public health advisory on the mental health challenges confronting youth, saying that symptoms of depression and anxiety have doubled during the pandemic. And special needs children, by the way, were in that increased category. He called for a broad-based and rapid response from government, social media companies, community groups, schools, teachers, parents and even students. Have any of you read the report? Is this district planning to follow any of the recommendations provided? If so, which ones? Mr. Selesnik telling teachers to stay mindful for signs of distress is severely inadequate. Ms. Schiff, I read your editorial in today's Katona Lewis Borough Times and you wrote that the board was unable to attend our town hall due to open meeting laws. Not only was this reason not provided in your RSVP to us on behalf of the board, but if you had truly wanted to attend, you could have reached out to us to ensure all those rules were followed. Because to my knowledge, they actually were. We held the event in a facility that provided barrier-free physical access to the physically handicapped, provided video conferencing for those who were unable to attend in person, allowed our meeting to be open to the press and followed all of the requirements for public notice. So what part of the open meeting law prohibited you and the entire board from attending? And Mr. Selesnik, while I'm glad you're consulting with an expert on autism, what about all the rest of the kids with IEPs? Do you plan to bring in other experts like Russ Barkley or Ned Halliwell and have them observe children with ADHD? What about children with other disabilities who receive services? How will those issues be addressed? I have so many more questions, but I know I'm already out of time, so I'll leave you with this. It's a quote from US Senator Dianne Feinstein. "No child left behind requires states and school districts to ensure that all students are learning and reaching their highest potential. Special education students should not be left out of this accountability." Thank you. And one more quick thing on behalf of my daughter, who was Mrs. White in Clue at the John Jay Middle School play. Thank you to all of you who attended. I know they're very grateful, they loved performing for really a full house the nights I was there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope Turbert.
Good evening. My name is Hope Turbert, I am the parent of a student in one of the self-contained classes at Increase Miller. I first want to thank Jackie for acknowledging the board comments on November 4th. I think it's important that we all pause for a second and appreciate the fact that this is a civil rights issue. And if everybody had kept quiet when George Floyd was murdered by police, there wouldn't be the justice that he received. So to ask us to keep quiet when another autistic child was abused is unfair. Anyway. As time goes on and our group continues advocating for special education students in the district, it seems that rather than obtaining any concrete answers, our list of questions just keeps growing. So tonight, I would like to begin by asking a few questions. I hope that during board dialogue, some answers will be provided. Regarding cameras in special education classes, can you please explain the reasons why it is such a complicated issue? Moving on now to legal fees. Why does KLSD employ two law firms, one is general counsel and one a special ed counsel? I happen to know that our general counsel firm, Ingram and Smith, provides special education services to many school districts. Similarly, Mr. Pedigro's firm provides general counsel services to many school districts. How much is KLSD's retainer with Ingram and Smith? How much is KLSD's retainer with Thomas Drohan Waxman Pedigro and Mealy? What do each of these retainers cover? How do we as taxpayers pay out of pocket for each attorney? And how long has the district worked with these attorneys? Now I have some questions for Superintendent Selesnik, although I have to edit some of them because he did provide some information on Dr. Volkmar's visit. He mentioned that Dr. Volkmar spent four hours. But I've heard, and I will admit this is hearsay, that he only spent 20 minutes in my son's special ed class at Increase Miller. What feedback did Dr. Volkmar provide specifically regarding the K through two special class at Increase Miller? When will I have an opportunity to speak with Dr. Volkmar about his feedback? I understand the parent meeting, but it sounds to me as though the entire parent community will be invited. And I don't see in the meeting with potentially hundreds of people how I, one of the few parents of autistic children in the self-contained classes, will have time to receive the feedback that I deserve. When will my teachers, my son's teachers, therapists and aides have an opportunity to receive feedback and ask questions? And I specifically reference aides, one-to-one aides, because our children work with one-to-one aides all day long and I'm entirely unclear the level of training that they receive. They should be included in this process with Dr. Volkmar and I hope that they are. I'm going to stick around until board dialogue tonight, even though it's very late, in hopes of receiving answers to my questions. Before my three minutes are up, I wanted to address one other issue. Last night, or last month, I emailed trustee Burke, who's not here tonight, to follow up on his comments at the November 4th BOE meeting regarding cameras in self-contained classrooms, because he said it was an issue he would like more insight into, but also mentioned that it's complicated, so I wanted to know what those complications are. Mr. Burke replied that Ms. Schiff would respond to me as BOE president on behalf of the entire board. And although I'm still unclear why Ms. Schiff has to speak on behalf of trustees and they cannot speak for themselves, I waited for her email and when I received it, I was perplexed. Rather than address anything I had asked in my email to trustee Burke, Ms. Schiff wrote extensively about KLSD's extended school year program. There was no mention of cameras in self-contained classrooms. Rather, she told me, "The district's commitment to providing extended school year services to special education students is evidence that, quote, 'KLSD has taken great pride and care in providing the very best educational opportunities possible for all students and especially our special education students.'" I happened to catch Ms. Schiff's letter in the KLSD Times today and saw that you again chose to wrote about the extended school year program, claiming that the BOE advocated to safeguard extended school year by calling on state assembly and senate to vote against the special education reduction in the 2018-19 state executive budget. So for those who are not aware, a federal law called the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act entitles all students in this country to a free and appropriate public education. If it is demonstrated that a child would experience regression over summer break, the law entitles that child to a 12-month school year, which is commonly known as extended school year or ESY. Ms. Schiff, students like my son, who we regress on weekends, during school breaks and in fact overnight, are entitled to ESY as a civil right. KLSD and all public school districts in this country have an obligation under federal law to provide education to these students over the summer regardless of how much funding the state budget provides to these programs. It is insincere to claim that your self-serving actions and safeguarding funding for this program is somehow advocacy on behalf of special needs children. This district's obligation to provide ESY to eligible students would have continued in 2018-19, no matter how much funding New York State allocated for it. The only thing that was at stake, in fact, was the district's bottom line. It shows a severe lack of understanding, empathy and sincerity to claim that advocating for public funding for a program you are required by law to provide was done for the purpose of helping our students, when the only thing you were trying to help is your budget. In fact, although many school districts in this state and even this county provide a full six-hour day to extended school year students over the summer, this district provides a mere three hours. Once again, this district provides the bare minimum it is obligated to under the law and gives itself a pat on the back.
Thank you. Matthew Golia.
Ms. Schiff, may I read for Alexa first or?
No, thank you, we're gonna do the on.
I'm gonna do mine first, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Hey guys, happy holidays. Thank you for recognizing a BOC student, congratulations to Louis. I want to thank all the parents who waited for two hours for their chance to speak. Superintendent Selesnik, you don't have an easy job, we got to see some of that a couple hours ago. Thank you for your information on the opportunity for parents to meet with Dr. V. I'm looking forward to it. But please, please keep the parents and the community involved. You know, I just heard you speak about a stakeholder meeting you were gonna have to discuss the elementary schools. I feel like that's something that we've been asking for. So I was kind of confused by that, I don't know why we haven't had that over this issue. I'm gonna switch gears now. Since the year 2000, the CDC has been tracking the prevalence of children with autism in the US. Last week, they issued a new report and the numbers have increased from one in 54 to one in 44 over the span of two years. 10 years ago, that number was one in 88. And now we're at 144, so the numbers of autistic kids have doubled in 10 years, at least the diagnoses has. Overall prevalence in boys is one in 27. So if you do some quick math, we have 3,000 kids, that's about 70 diagnosed autistic kids. More, more than 50 of them are gonna be boys. When they do this study, the nearest geographic area to us that was surveyed was New Jersey and they had a prevalence of one in 35. So it's likely that New York State is also higher than the national average. Now these increases may not mean that there are actually more autistic kids. It probably reflects improvements in diagnosis and identification. That being said, more diagnoses mean more services required. So this latest report, I'm not sure if you're aware of it or if you've seen it, but it says, quote, "This is critical information to providers, particularly public schools, of future service needs. This information should be used to plan for future resource and service needs." So I'm not sure if you're aware of this new report, but I'd like to know what the Board of Education and administration are doing. You know, you talked about a master plan earlier, but what are you guys doing to prepare for the continuously increasing number of autistic students and the resulting special services requirements? Or if you're not doing anything, please be aware of the study and, and you know, a key. Switching gears again. I'm, I don't know if trustee Burke has personal issues or not, but I'm a little disappointed that he's not here considering there's only one BOE meeting this month and the next one is not for a month away. But you know, he made comments on November 4th, he said, he doesn't think anyone really understands how much you guys care for the vulnerable students. He said, "It's difficult to sit there and be told that you don't care when it's clear that you absolutely do care." He said, "You guys are taking steps and actions." He said, "Sometimes it's difficult to talk about, but rest assured, we are." So I emailed him and I asked him to elaborate on those steps and actions. Specifically, what's been done since these issues first came up in May. When I emailed him, I again applauded the visit by Dr. Volkmar. I applauded the revision to the restraint policy, but I said, "Those are two things that I'm aware of that have happened since May. Is there more?" And I guess similar to Hope, I got a response saying that President Schiff would reply on his behalf. Also similar to Hope, I don't understand why he can't explain his own words, I don't know why Ms. Schiff has to do that for him. So I think in today's opinion piece, Ms. Schiff, I believe you tried to, you know, communicate this response. You brought up some ESY events that happened in 2018 through 2020. Of course, this was before the May event or when we brought these issues up in May. But it does seem like you were, the board was taking credit for safeguarding ESY, which is a federally mandated program under the Individuals with Disabilities Act. So it's unclear to me what the board is claiming it safeguarded. Also, our ESY program is only three hours a day and many districts in New York and BOCs have up to six hours a day. So by you bringing up, you know, I counter with, our ESY program is weak as far as hours provided. What are you gonna do if your kid goes to school nine to 12? He can't go to a camp after that, so put yourself in those parent situations, I don't know what I'm gonna do this summer. My son's gonna be home after 12 and there's no camp I can put him in. Ms. Schiff, you then said that the BOE fully funds services agreed to by the Committee on Special Education. Again, I understand that under federal law, kids are entitled to a free and appropriate public education and this is a guaranteed civil right for students with identified disabilities. So are there any grounds where the Board of Education could deny the agreed-upon services? Or are you guys really thinking that you're going above and beyond by approving what the CSE recommends? You mentioned a recent hire of a psychologist, but you failed to mention the corresponding reduction of three special education teaching assistants and five full-time special education teaching aides. You mentioned the revised policy, you mentioned the visit by Dr. Volkmar, great. But again, I respectfully ask, I wanted to ask trustee Burke, but I'll ask the whole board, please clarify the steps and actions the BOE has specifically taken since these issues were brought up in May. Dr. Rifkin, earlier you gave your medical opinion on vaccines. I personally agree with that opinion. In your medical opinion, are restraints dangerous? How about 30 of them? What is the view of your medical practice? The American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry and the American Academy of Pediatric supports the Keeping All Students Safe Act, which as you know prohibits seclusion and severely limits physical restraints. Dr. Rifkin, do you support the Keeping All Students Safe Act? Finally, you guys are all educators and BOE members here. I'd like to know, how would you honestly grade yourself on your overall handling and response to the issues brought to your attention in 2021? Here we are at the end of the year. Would you give yourself an A or do you recognize that some things could have been done a little better on your end? Have you ever thought in retrospect, you could have, you should have, simply apologized to the family for the mistakes made regarding the use of restraints? Do you think that could have avoided some of what's happened? I think so. I also think you guys missed out on a really good opportunity at the town hall, I think it would have been, we had a good discussion, those who attended, I think it would have been a respectful discussion. I think you would have gotten something out of it, we would have gotten something out of it and I think it would have been a step forward and I think, I think you guys missed out on that, okay? Thank you for your time, have a good new year.
Thank you.
Ashley Lamonick, Lemonick, and I apologize for pronunciation. If you'd please tell me how to pronounce it, I'll pronounce it correctly the next time.
No worries. It's Ashley Lamonick.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, wow. Okay, uh, let's see here, so my name is Ashley Lamonick, I'm a resident of Katona and I also spoke at the November 18th meeting. So while I have a number of concerns, I also have some prepared comments that I want to make sure I get to. But I will start with some responses to what I heard earlier. So, one, kids in schools, having every kid in school yields the best health outcomes. To that, I wonder, what about the psychological impacts of masks and distancing? To that, I wonder what about the psychological impacts of masks and distancing on developing minds? And it kind of connected the mental health impact that we're all obviously concerned about. Another comment was made about the fact that vaccines reduce the risk of hospitalization and death. While I won't argue that, I will say according to, actually, let me start with, it's worth noting that for kids, the rate of hospitalization and death is extremely low as it is as of a few months ago. It was 0.0007% is the current fatality rate for children under 18 in the United States. That's data from the CDC. So just keeping that in mind as we push incentivize and coerce around children getting this vaccine. Also, if we talk about community transmission, even Rachel Walensky of the CDC herself a few months ago stated that due to the Delta variant, the vaccine does not prevent transmission. I'm happy to play a clip or email sources for anything that I share. Let's see here. Also worth noting, just earlier, actually, I heard that I saw an article that an Oklahoma judge, excuse me, been a long night, an Oklahoma judge blocks a school district from quarantining unvaccinated students who are healthy due to discrimination, I believe. Which leads me to my prepared comments. So as, as I believe was mentioned at the end of the November 8th board meeting, I do understand and recognize this difficult position that the board is in as I'm sure you wouldn't have expected to be dealing with large-scale medical choices being in the education field. That said, I'll say the Thanksgiving letter on the KLSD website was a lovely update with the exception of the coercive push and praise for families to vaccinate their children in order to avoid quarantine. Mr. Slesnik wrote, "Thanks to vaccinations, quarantining has been almost eradicated at middle and high school. Hopefully, the same will soon be true at our elementary schools. The guidelines in place are discriminatory and coercive. The COVID vaccines do not even offer 100% protection, and while per the CDC, no vaccines do. COVID vaccines are new, still being studied in clinical trials, and what we've seen is that protection fluctuates. The guidelines read more like a carrot to incentivize vaccination. What's next for kids and families that don't bite? The stick? Or if you do think vaccines offer suitable protection, perhaps it's time to drop some or all of the COVID protocols within the schools, especially as vaccination is now available for families who choose it, why not drop masking and social distancing, especially given the mental and psychological impact? How many children in the district or otherwise have had serious complications from COVID? How many hospitalizations? Any worse? Well, COVID has no doubt been deadly and devastating around the world. The response to COVID is creating its own issues, especially for children. It's been interesting to learn and see how the processes around guidelines work. A few of you made comments during the November 18th board meeting about local control and where the state chooses to allocate local control. It got me thinking. The control absolutely should be local. New York is a big, diverse state, and maybe it shouldn't be the local community waiting for the state to give control. Rather, the board representing the community should advocate for their own local control. The schools are here to serve students, not to serve the governor or anyone else in Albany or anywhere else. The Longwood Central School District on Long Island understands this. Their board has written a series of letters to the governors to push for more local control over when to unmask and to express the importance for their fam, this is from them, for their families to make medical decisions for their children in consultation with their family doctor based upon their own circumstances, medical history, and beliefs. Now, add, I realize from the things that I've heard from this board, you might not agree, but I would still argue for local control. I implore you, as well as your fellow superintendents and boards, to push back for more local control, and I'm happy to help draft communications to Albany in order to do so. I also have copies of the letters that were written by the Longwood Central School District, if you'd like. I'm thankful to have a voice as a future parent within the district. I leave you with this question. What is the first step parents and board members need to take in order to start this process? Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Gleck.
Good evening. I'm Erica Gleck, and I have several questions tonight that I'm hoping can be addressed during board dialogue. I too have brought copies of these questions to share so that the board will have them at the ready. First, I'd like to say kudos for adding Hegarty to our literacy program. I think it's important to give credit for finally making an improvement where it was needed. Phonemic awareness is an area where units of study has been lacking. So I appreciate that we finally recognized it and attempted to rectify it. But this leads me to additional questions. I'd imagine a literacy committee would have addressed many of these questions, but alas, as we don't have one, I'll pose those questions here. First, why did we decide to patch the Broken Teachers College Units of Study Program instead of implementing one that worked? What other programs were considered before Hegarty, and why was Hegarty chosen? What do you hope the effect will be in implementation? How will that effect be defined? How will it be measured? With what frequency? How is Hegarty being implemented into current practice? Is it replacing something else? We know that our teachers barely have any time in the classroom as it is. Are we putting another ask on them during the day, which will be unrealistic? Is Hegarty also considered a tier-one tool? Have we talked with other entities who have integrated Hegarty successfully? And if so, what did we glean from those conversations? Who is being trained and how? Is it all teachers? Is it K through 2 only? Is it just RTI teachers? Special education teachers? Are we training a trainer? What is our goal for the number of staff trained? How does Hegarty fit into the toolbox of programs, resources, and assessments that we currently use? If we're currently also using it as an assessment, how often are we collecting this data, and what are we doing with it? So those were my questions specific to this change, this change and the addition of Hegarty, but I do have others. First, why the lack of transparency surrounding this change? I feel like there were many ways that you could have announced this, and the way that it was done was odd. There was a Facebook post and a response from Ms. Ford to a direct question posed during board dialogue. If that question was never posed by the board member, would we have ever learned of this? And even on the website, you have to dig a bit to even find it on the Katona Lewisboro curriculum pages. A question about tonight's presentation, I just happened to notice there was a lot of information missing from the data, but my eyes tended to go to the fact that the participation rate for the ELA component of the testing kept decreasing for the older students, the older grades rather than the younger grades. And I'm just wondering if we have any information as to why that might be. Another question, why haven't we formed a literacy committee? Moving on, what percentage of students do you think deserve to read in our district? Is this percentage different for our students with disabilities? Are you, the board, okay with 29%? What research has the board done to understand the challenges and the shortcomings of the Teachers College Workshop Program? Or if you are of the belief that this is a solid program, what research have you done to support this idea? Do you research any of the programs suggested by our superintendent of curriculum and instruction, or do you just trust her blindly? What criteria do you use when approving curriculum? Why do we use multiple literacy programs instead of just one or two well-researched, successful ones? What are the terms of our contract with Teachers College Units of Study? What steps would the board need in order to get rid of a failing program such as Teachers College Units of Study? As Ms. Ford suggested a couple of weeks ago, individual teachers and/or principals may have purchased the Teachers College Phonics Program, a program currently under more scrutiny than the Reading and Writing Program for its lack of research. If they are using that instead of foundations in Hegarty that the district approved, I find that curious that they were offered so much liberty. And is there no oversight here? Can teachers just ignore the science and do as they wish? I'd imagine that's a slippery slope. And also curious, are there other areas in Katona, Lewisboro that we're okay denying science? And finally, are you comfortable supporting inequality? Because until we can teach every child in our district to read and not just those who can afford private tutoring, how can we possibly say we support equity and inclusion? Thank you.
Thank you, Oksana Aronoff.
Good evening. So clearly, people are taking stock tonight. We're taking stock of all the questions we have asked you over the past eight months and received no substantive answers to, although I do want to acknowledge a fresh and important voice on the board that does consistently try to push this dialogue beyond platitudes, and again, want to thank Michener for doing that, because I think real dialogue is incredibly important. I won't hand you a list of questions. I really only have one. Just listening to and reading all the proclamations of how much the board cares about our children. I think there was a very easy way to show that when you could have instructed your employee, the superintendent, to work with us collaboratively to work out issues, to create committees, whatever it takes. You have elected not to do that, and it is very difficult to believe that there is actual care behind that, because that seems like a really thoughtful and frankly, simple way to move forward. So my question to you is, why did you elect to not do that? Because you do have the power to compel him to collaborate with parents. Ms. Schiff, I thank you for writing the opinion piece that was referred to several times tonight, because I think we now have a perfect compilation of the half-truths and omissions and outright misinformation that this district consistently uses to gaslight parents. And I won't address the things that have already been addressed and debunked, but I do want to talk about one specific part of that opinion piece, and I will quote. You wrote that the district was delighted to learn that Assemblyman Burdick and State Senator Harkam are working to enact a notice bill that would essentially help state education law to catch up to the policy changes KLSD adopted in response to concerns from our community. So let's be clear, this board did absolutely nothing having learned that a child was restrained routinely with no notification to parents. While you would like to flip the script so you can run victory laps because of a policy change with respect to parent notification, the reality is you made this change only after community members rebuked you in droves for taking no action. Because of the trauma that occurred on the watch of this administration and this board, KLSD is the poster child for why this legislation is urged at the state level currently. That is the reputation this board's incompetence has attached to us. When this administration repeatedly failed to notify my family of its traumatizing, my non-speaking son via routine use of restraint on him over weeks and months, and the superintendent concluded via his quote-unquote investigation that this was not abusive, we appealed to the board. Ms. Schiff, contrary to her proclamations of the BOE welcomes parents' concerns, turned us away and sent us instead to complain to the New York Department of Education. We went back to her again, clarifying that she had no interest in hearing from us. It was made clear that she and the board did not. The board and Ms. Schiff, as its communicator-in-chief, could have taken that dialogue in a variety of directions. They could have expressed concern or curiosity. They could have chosen to be the eyes and ears they claim to be for my family, for this family and their community. Instead, their preference was to kick us to the lawyers. Their preference was to waste this community's tax dollars on a legal confrontation headed by the special education attorney as opposed to try to avoid a legal confrontation via the human approach of dialogue with my family. In spite of Ms. Schiff's overly solicitous and saccharine overtures to various members of this community since then, she and the board had zero interest in what my family had to say about our experience. They had already heard everything they believed they needed to know from the administration and their attorneys. It wasn't until our work as an advocacy group got going that Ms. Schiff and the board responded to my third request for a meeting, but subsequently denied it again because we wanted to meet as an advocacy group with some board members. I'm walking the community through this so that there is a clear understanding that families, when they encounter a lack of desire on the part of the district to support them and their children, are forced into legal recourse by this indifference, by the indifference we encounter at the administration and the board level. Legal recourse, which only enriches the district attorneys who continue to endlessly appeal any decision made in the parents' favor, the attorneys who get paid more, the more adversarial the relationship between the district and the parents. And I hope our community will consider if this is really the best stewardship of our tax dollars. I think this community deserves a board that does not believe they're owed a debt of gratitude and derive no status satisfaction from sitting on this body. I believe that in the midst of so many challenges that our children face, we need to engage our community. You need to engage your community. I think that anyone who doesn't really believe in that kind of real dialogue shouldn't really consider themselves the eyes and ears of our community. Thank you.
Quite a few people still looking like they need to speak. Could we put a timer on this? I feel like.
Unfortunately, yeah, the timer's broken. Would somebody be able to serve in the capacity as timekeeper for me? Sure, that'd be great, Liz. Thank you. Sarah Pulizato.
Good evening. At the last board meeting I attended, a member of the board during their question and answer period after posed a question as to whether parents of disabled children are availing themselves of opportunities to work with their children's teachers, with therapists, and with school staff. And although I was pretty taken aback by that, the question seemed genuine, so I'd like to try to provide a genuine answer. Based on the many parents I know with disabled children, I feel pretty comfortable asserting that the amount of time we spend accessing or attempting to access school and community resources amounts basically to another full-time job. On top of the usual work of parenting, maintaining a household, and many of us holding down a paying job, I can tell you that while my children's challenges might be considered relatively mild in comparison to the full spectrum of disabilities, I personally spend between 10 and 20 hours per week on paperwork, meetings, appointments, phone calls, and research related to their care. And that doesn't include the extra time that I need to spend working with my children one-on-one. During the pandemic, I was essentially my autistic son's one-to-one full-time aide because he was in school a total of 20 days between September and December of 2020. This was in another district. I've spent the past 18 months petitioning New York State via the OPWDD for the disability benefits for which he qualifies due to his autism diagnosis. And we've now arrived after 18 months at the point where they have determined that he is qualified to apply for those benefits, not to receive them, now qualified to apply for those benefits. I've submitted hundreds of pages of evaluations, data, paperwork to them, which represents hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars of our family's time and resources. And I fully expect that it will be another 18 months minimum before we actually are able to access any of those benefits, which will mean that he can access therapies and treatments that are not otherwise available. I've spent hundreds of hours cumulatively preparing for IEP meetings, teacher meetings, therapist meetings, parent trainings and the like. And I'm not in any way unique, and many parents must and do do a lot more. Parents in the disability community are experts at leveraging opportunities to create a safe, appropriate, enriching experience for their children, and our time is at a premium. So we don't come here lightly. We wouldn't come here to waste time or cause trouble or create conflict because we have enough battles. Late nights are difficult for us, as I'm sure they are for you. And I can't speak for anyone but myself, but I'm here because I genuinely believe that as a school board, you play a vital. that as a school board, you play a vital role in helping to create the kind of environment that will keep all children safe, that will enable them to, you know, access the education to which they're entitled. While the circumstances were tragic, I think that the focus on special education and KLSD could be an opportunity for us to decide that we want to create a gold standard special education program in this district.
I'm sorry, are you almost finished?
Yes, I have one last thing.
Thank you.
And as part of that, to develop a social emotional learning program that could be state-of-the-art, I believe that is among the most vital roles of a school district. And I don't know if you're familiar with the social emotional learning benchmarks that New York State put out and the accompanying guidance document. But if you are, if you're not, you know, obviously it's out there and I can email. My printer was having an extended moment, so I didn't print any copies. But my question is whether you are willing to consider using those documents as a framework to set clear and specific goals to make that a priority in this school district. I was encouraged to see that you're gathering data through those surveys. However, as my husband pointed out, while it may sound very good to say that 90% of children feel safe and supported, it is actually a devastating tragedy if 10% of children feel unsafe and unsupported at school. So I would urge you to make this an urgent, urgent priority, not just for children in the special education community, but for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else waiting to speak for themselves? Or wishing to sign up? Okay, thank you. If not, Matt Golia on behalf of Ferrera, please.
This is for Alexa Ferrera. Good evening. At the last meeting, I spoke about the effect of trauma on a community. Tonight, I wanted to add another observation about trauma. Trauma is silencing. It splits you off from the rest of the world. It seems like one day you are a part of society, of a community, and the next day you're on the outside looking in. Part of you wants to knock on the window and be seen, and part of you wants to hide out of some irrational shame. It is like a secret, unspoken contract between all parties, perpetrator, victim, and bystander. Everyone becomes afraid of speaking. So tonight I have some questions. And as they relate to district policies, I thought I should address them to the board. I hope you understand that I have chosen to ask these questions here publicly instead of in a private email, both because I believe these are matters of general interest and precisely because I too feel the weight of the contract, the contract of silence. But I have had enough unfortunate experience in this area to know that silence serves only the perpetrator. It does not protect me, though I may fear to disturb it. It does not protect you, the board, or the administrators, or the staff. And it certainly does not protect the students. It serves only the perpetrator. So it is essential that we have these uncomfortable conversations and that we have them publicly. I would like to ask tonight about the district policies on the training of staff for the identification and reporting of, quote, "child abuse" in an educational setting. Educational setting. Would you please discuss in as much detail as you can what staff is trained and how? Does the district use an outside organization? Does the training happen on campus or off-site? How often is the training? What does the training consist of and how is it delivered? Would you consider allowing a parent, perhaps an advocacy member, to join these training sessions? As a matter of course, the perspective and participation of a parent, especially a special needs parent, could ensure that this timing is most effective, this training is most effective. I also want to ask about the district, about how the district tracks reports of teacher or staff misconduct. Do all reports automatically go in the teacher or staff member's file? Is there a central document where all events are recorded that would allow for the tracking of patterns? I would imagine not all events rise to the level of discipline, but if they do not, are they discarded or destroyed? I'm concerned that a pattern of small events that might serve as a red flag to an observant administrator be preserved in some way. I understand it may be difficult to answer these questions without preparation or reference to your policies, but please do respond with as much substance as you are able. Thank you.
Thank you. Gia Miller on behalf of Peeler.
My name is Paula. I'm a resident of Katona and have two children who attend KES. And we have had a less than pleasant experience with KLSD's special education. For months, I have watched parents describe the experiences they and their children have had with special education within the district. For months, I have watched the board sit and do nothing. I continue to be disgusted at the lack of appropriate response or any response that acknowledges the shortcomings of the special education department the board oversees. Today, I read an opinion piece in the Katona Lewisboro Times by Ms. Schiff, the board president, who stated, quote, "KLSD has taken great care in advocating, responding to our community, and providing the best possible education opportunities for all students and especially our special education students. I speak from personal experience when I say that the great care KLSD has provided involves denying children services, writing IEPs that leave out critical details and are grossly inaccurate. Additionally, the district provides special needs students with poorly trained staff and has caused direct physical and emotional harm to disabled students. I could go on. Countless parents have spoken, describing this poor state of the special education department. While you sit back and congratulate yourselves in public for the work that you do, you all should be ashamed of yourselves."
Thank you. Ashley on behalf of Michelle.
My name is Michelle Dubrovage, a former educator and former parent of children in the district. In reference to encouraging vaccines, sorry. That was an extra question she had. By taking state aid and financial incentives where it is required by you as a district, is there anything in reference to encouraging vaccines? The rush to push emergency use vaccination, especially for children within the 5-11 age group, is wrong. This is a new experimental vaccine that was fast-tracked to be ready in 10 months, when other inoculations would typically take 10 years to develop. Children are within the very low-risk group for COVID. Independent doctors worldwide who are researching this vaccine are concerned that this vaccination could potentially do more harm than good to this very low-risk group. Dr. Martin Feely, who is the former clinical director of the Dublin Midlands Hospital Group and is pro-vaccination, is one of the myriad of doctors throughout the world who is questioning whether young children should get the Pfizer, BioNTech, or Moderna vaccine. He says, "My concern is that the vaccination could potentially do more harm than good to these very low-risk people." Dr. Feely said, "There is a less than 1 in 10,000 chance of healthy people dying as a result of contracting COVID-19." In the event that a child tests positive for COVID-19, typically the children are covered very quickly. He also says, quote, "People should be free to ask questions. The debate comes back to the issue of informed consent." What I'm saying is certainly for anyone over 70, and certainly everybody with high-risk factors, the vaccination would be a very good idea. For very young people and children, it's absolutely not. I would say categorically, without any hesitation, children should not be vaccinated with this new vaccine. Other doctors who have researched a number of peer-reviewed studies include UCLA Geffen School of Medicine Dr. Joseph Lopato and Yale School of Public Health Dr. Harvey Risch. They warn that there are legitimate and serious concerns about the side effects of the COVID vaccine and point out that, quote, "While you would never know it from listening to the public health officials, not a single published study has demonstrated that patients with a prior infection benefit from COVID-19 vaccination. But this isn't readily acknowledged by the CDC or Anthony Fauci as an indication of how deeply entangled pandemic politics is in science. The decision to vaccinate a child against COVID or not is a parent's choice and should not be incentivized or coerced by the district. In summary, I urge you to, I urge that you support parents in making their own decisions about whether or not to vaccinate their children and to advise parents to seek informed consent on risk versus health benefits of the emergency use of this vaccine. Thank you for listening to these deep concerns."
Thank you. And if you don't mind staying, Ashley, I think that you perhaps have the last on behalf of-
Yep.
On behalf of Dawn Cameraman, please.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, and there might be another one. So if I overlooked somebody, thank you, Julia, for helping me, but please go ahead and finish.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Let's see. She says, "59-plus children testing positive for a virus that they have no reliable test. Follow the science, as all you people say."
Pardon me, can you please say who you're speaking on?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah. This is for Dawn.
Dawn Cameraman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yep. Yeah, she was going to speak, but texted. And she does have children in the school, I believe. "59-plus children testing positive for a virus that they have no reliable test. Follow the science, as all you people say." Yet that science said for almost two years, children, sorry, oh, yet that that science said for almost two years, children were the least affected from this virus, yet they are the most affected from being denied the law to a free education for 10 days if someone takes a test and it comes back positive. A test that waters, that says water is positive, soda, goats, other things. The tests that the, the tests the school did, I'm sorry, the tests the school did that get sent to a lab shows more accurate numbers because so far none tested positive, yet the PCR tests found in clinics and such are not accurate. Science has masked our children and made them get sick more with bacteria. Follow the science. Where was that mask made? Where was the cloth made? Children all day are breathing in chemicals that are harming them. Washing that mask will never wash out the chemicals used most likely in China to grow that cotton, the pesticides inhaled, the medical ones made with the same gasoline you put in your gas tank. Is a school a place of learning or a medical facility? I never signed my children up for the ability to wear medical devices, and I'm sure many other parents as well did not sign their children up for that either. Yet you violate our freedoms, treat them as slaves, because history shows slaves wore masks, a method to remind a person to shut their mouths. The masks don't work if numbers are high. Either end the mask or shut the schools, because this is a virus. The science says the viruses don't go away. Stop following the political party and follow that which you claim to teach, science."
Gia Miller on behalf of Abrams, please.
I'm speaking on behalf of Mark Abrams. I'm sorry that I could not be here tonight in person, and I'm glad that another parent advocate can read this letter on my behalf. This has been a very informative year for me through my involvement as an advocate for special needs students in our district. I learned that for the last several years, staunch advocates for a science-based approach towards reading have repeatedly been stonewalled by this board and administration. I learned that an experienced special education teacher apparently was not provided the kind of support necessary to function humanely and effectively and ended up engaging in a pattern of emotionally and physically abusive behaviors with students under her care. I learned that our administration and this board have worked as hard as possible to prevent public disclosure to our community, made this teacher disappear as quickly as possible, and stonewalled any real exploration of all the factors that could have led our community to help provide the kind of supports that staff and students deserve. All of this occurred while the families of students who were witness to this were also misled, and a substantial number of students in that self-contained classroom showed clear signs of psychological trauma. I learned that in our middle school, self-contained classroom, a student was restrained over 30 times in the span of approximately two months without any parental notification. Once again, this administration and board sought to stonewall any open exploration that could lead to the community wanting us to trust our school while developing safeguards that could prevent this pattern of abuse from ever happening again. While this was happening, the lack of communication with other families whose children witnessed these events resulted in yet more students showing signs of psychological trauma. And I have personally experienced all levels of inadequate delivery of services for my stepson who has an IEP. By the way, I have his questions printed out for you also. This board is an elected group of individuals whose responsibility is to oversee our school system. In the past, other districts paid around six figures to send their children to our schools. Now, there is a busload of students going to and from Winward School daily. I'd like to know how much of our hard-earned taxpayer money is spent on our district's lawyers to fight families seeking appropriate services for their children, and how much more money is spent to pay for students to attend other schools? How many lawsuits is the district currently fighting regarding out-of-district placement? And how much do each of these lawsuits cost in terms of attorney fees and eventual settlement? Had we actually continued to deliver superior special education services, our school district could have a bus full of students attending our school district every day. Needless to say, from a fiduciary perspective, it appears as though this board has failed the taxpayers. The superintendent is not a board member, despite the appearance as such. The board is supposed to hold him accountable for the kinds of egregious problems that have been consistently-
Are you almost finished?
I am.
Okay.
Consistently identified by parents in our community. Instead, this board has sought to obscure and misrepresent information rather than see to it that the superintendent actually lives up to his responsibilities and makes the necessary changes. Mr. Selesnik's often-used expression, "It's complicated", was used in Chappaqua and is now being used here. It appears that this is his way of indicating he's complicit in attempting to cover up his wrongdoings. In Chappaqua, the legal record of the egregious wrongdoings has been sealed. It makes you wonder what the outcome will be here. The common component in both school districts, Mr. Selesnik. Finally, I'd like to ask the board members whose terms are up this school year, do you plan to run for reelection? If you do, I hope you know that we will run candidates against you and fill your seats with caring taxpayers who actually demand and work towards the board fulfilling its responsibilities.
Thank you. Is anybody else waiting to speak? Okay, if not, I think I'm going to close the public forum. And this brings us to 10.01, which is the consent agenda. I'm not aware of any items that are being pulled out to be voted on separately. In which case, would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Moved by Julia, seconded by Bill. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Questions, concerns? If not, then we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Six zero. And I think tonight we have a gift from Claire Aldrich donating paint to the John Jay Middle School for Drama Productions. If I could please have a motion for this resolution moved by Julia, seconded by Catherine. Thank you so much to Claire for the generous donation of materials. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, six zero. And that brings us to board dialogue and discussion. I'm not sure whether any board members had new topics or comments. We'll pause while people are gathering their thoughts. I would like to provide a couple of clarifications and invite my board colleagues into potentially some conversation. I think, you know, it has been said already at our meetings, but it probably bears repeating that the Board of Education does have prescribed responsibilities. And it is important that we fulfill those responsibilities, of course, and also that we not recklessly attempt to play a role that is not in the purview of a Board of Education. And specifically, I think it's critically important, especially because I can see that it has caused great distress, that there has been a fundamental misunderstanding whereby, you know, there's an assertion that the board has been forced into legal recourse, where rather, I would say, this is an experienced Board of Education that fully understands the importance of acting in accordance with our role as fiduciaries to the community, and that when there are certain disagreements between a superintendent of schools and a member of the community that cannot be adjudicated by a Board of Education, it is our responsibility to advise community members it is our responsibility to advise community members of their appropriate recourse. And this Board of Education has and always will continue to advise community members of that right. I think that's a critically important clarification from my perspective. I think we heard other comments tonight that also indicate to me that we've community members who appropriately, why, why would it be their responsibility to really know and understand the role of a board? So, for example, the notion that we are all educators. I feel a need to clarify that I don't think any of us are educators. It is a Board of Education's responsibility to hire to hire a superintendent of schools who is our chief executive educator and officer. And I would like to invite my board colleagues to share with me your perspective and to help me to reflect on a concern that I have with regard to our meetings, you know. As the board is aware, I don't have any unique privileges as the board president. I have a couple of responsibilities. One of which, by the way, is not to write an opinion piece. And I didn't, as you know, write an opinion piece. I responded to a journalist who sought clarification on a board's decision and it sounds like it got turned into an opinion piece. So apologies. I think the board's aware that was not something I authored or intended to author as an opinion piece. That being said, um. It is my responsibility to preside over these meetings and to make sure that these are the meetings that you wish to have and that set you up to fulfill your role as fiduciaries, as trustees of the school district, and to conduct the business of the school district. And as we plan for our board meetings in twenty 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 two, twenty twenty two, based on guidance from the state and our own experience of board meetings. And because I think it's important to observe that we're actually seeing um, an evolution in a practice. Uh, I, I would like to invite some conversation around whether this would be a juncture where we should agree that we are no longer suspending normal practices and procedures for our meetings, including public comment. We, the elected trustees, working together as the Board of Ed, have a mandate from our community. We have a unique mandate and a responsibility on behalf of all Katona Lewisboro schoolchildren to maintain a working environment at our meetings that is conducive to performing the work of the school district, discharging our obligation to conduct business, and also to recruiting and retaining good volunteer board members and effective superintendent who attracts and retains other high-quality administrators and staff members to Katona Lewisboro, on all of whom we and all of our constituents depend daily to educate our children. And I am concerned that we have approximately functional equivalent, seven community members or so who, um, we welcome their feedback. We welcome all community feedback. We want to hear from our community in person. But it is the responsibility of the Board of Education, from my perspective, to represent our community effectively here at the board meetings. And I'm not sure this is a responsibility that we should delegate to a community member who potentially is in a dispute with the superintendent or really to any community members. And this is really for you to help me to think through with respect to how we come back in twenty twenty two. But our core function as elected trustees is to conduct the business of this school district here in accordance with open meeting laws, publicly noticed meetings. Whereas community members actually have many other forums available to them to participate in advocacy, to engage without the restrictions of open meeting laws. This is our one opportunity. And, um, you know, I, I, I need help in determining whether this is how we best discharge that duty or whether returning to school after the break would be an opportunity to um, perhaps rededicate ourselves to our normal operating procedures prior to the pandemic, when, of course, policies were suspended by executive order, which is no longer the key. So I'll pause there because I really don't want to. You don't want to overstep. I merely wish to, uh, perhaps invite brief response or discussion. And we can go from there. Please, Alana.
I even, I, I love the idea of kind of returning to standard operating procedures, uh, sort of prior, pre-pandemic, but I'm not sure that we're there right now. You know, the, the governor declared a state of emergency last week. Our county executive did the same. Uh, COVID, we're about to have another rise in COVID cases, unfortunately. So, I mean, I would love to have a time where everybody feels safe coming to our meeting in person and speaking for themselves. And a time where our kids could go to school unmasked again. And, you know, things, you know, I, I, unfortunately, I don't think we're there yet. I would love to talk about how we get there and what it means for all of us to get there. And I wonder what would it be like if we set an ambitious goal to get ourselves there with the tools that we have in place? So while it's not required, and I don't think there's any coercive effort going on, I think our district has been extremely clear on promoting the public health policies of the county and of the state and of the federal government. And so what would it be like if we had some ambitious goal to get all our kids back in school and keep kids from being quarantined by having a large voluntary vaccination rate? Volunteer, like a hundred percent vaccination rates that we can make sure that everybody in the community is safe. I think like, I, I'm sort of interested in more of a discussion around getting ourselves back to normal before sort of adjusting tools that we have in place because I just, unfortunately, I don't think we're there yet. And I think as we heard tonight in public discussion around, you know, there's a lot of misinformation still circulating. And we have this interesting poster over here that says because fake news has real-world consequences. You know, that we have to be really careful. And, you know, so one thing I would be interested in discussing is like, what's the process in our meeting when misinformation is being put out around the vex, a deadly virus that's killing thousands of people a day? What do we do in a meeting? Do we allow that to sit out here? That's what I'm, I'm, I'm interested in talking about that. But I don't know that we should adjust the meetings. And as I said in a prior, you know, our format of our meetings. And as I said early on, I hope we're not getting back to this, but I, I, you know, I'm always a proponent of allowing people to participate in the meetings in the way they can. And as somebody who has young children, before I was able to make the commitment and adjust my schedule to come to these meetings, it was hard for me to come to meetings in person. I love that we're streaming meetings. I would be in, you know, probably on the other side of maybe, maybe of my colleagues. I'd be a proponent of allowing people to participate remotely as much as we can. And if we need to, you know, if we need to limit time for a public comment, maybe we think about that. If we want to keep minute meetings to a certain amount of time, that's something to think about. But I, I, you know, for me, when I think about, yes, our job is to conduct the business of the school district, but to me, the public's concerns are a part of our business. So that's, that's kind of where, where I'm thinking on this.
Thank you.
I agree with you about the importance of public participation. And I just wanted to say to Mr. Novak, who spoke first, um, how fascinating I found what you had to say and very interesting. And thank you for, for coming and and speaking with us and sharing your point of view. Um, my concern is, though, that tonight, we had most people blow right on through the, the three-minute limit. And, you know, I mean, it does feel a little arbitrary. And if you have something that you want to say that takes a little bit over three minutes, I'm sure, you know, we've all agreed that there's, there's grace to be had there. Um. But I do feel that we've had a problem fairly consistently about um, the opportunity for the board to have a dialogue afterwards. I think that I've heard a number of statements that, uh, were maybe not clear or, um, kind of don't give the full picture of things. Um. In terms of policy and vaccinations and things like that, a lot of the things that, that people have come to speak with us about are regulations and requirements that we follow that are not even in the purview or decision-making area of the board. We definitely should look at ways that we can encourage productive dialogue among, you know, the public and the board. But I would also like to ask people to remember that the board are also parents in this district. And it is our charge to think about the experience of every student in our district and, um, and do the business of the district. And it does seem to be getting a little bit more difficult. So I am definitely interested in in trying new things and, and thinking about how we do it better. How people can feel more satisfied with the conversations that we're having. I think that I, I know a number of people wanted to speak about the, um, the town hall event that they had. I, I think that one of the things that concerns me is we couldn't go as a board because we can't really have smaller segments of the entire community dictating when we have a board meeting and just convening the school board to talk about the issues they want to talk about because then we become vulnerable to any special interest group deciding they can convene a, a school board meeting. And then I just don't know how anything gets done. And so I am concerned about that. I am concerned about the number of misunderstandings or misstatements or just, you know, factually untrue things that we hear and that we don't have the opportunity to address them until afterwards. And a lot of time, people have either tuned out or left on home. And I don't blame them because we are going so very late these days. Um, I think that we have a wonderful community. I think we are very fortunate to live in amazing and supportive community that rallies around issues like this. And the children they want to protect and make sure have the best experience. But it is also extremely difficult then to, to go through the comments that we hear and try to determine where there is room for action, where there are things that need to be addressed. And, and separate that from the statements of support from other community members. Um. It does become kind of difficult, and we want to make sure we are doing the best we can for all of our students. And so yeah, I don't have a solution. Uh, I think that we do need to look at it, though, because I think it is important, especially with the presentations we heard tonight were so critical and they're so crucial to all the mission of, of the district. That I worry that a lot of that just didn't get heard. And I think there were some very important things about the, you know, the elementary school population and then how we're doing. And I, I mean, we're also still dealing with the pandemic. And we've got staff and administration and so many people who have worked so hard for so long. And I think that if we lose that context and start villainizing each other and saying that we're not doing the things that need to be done, I worry that we won't make any progress.
Thank you.
What processes were you really referring to?
You know, I think it's, um, a good question. Thank you. And I think it's, um, it's absolutely possible for the Board of Education, either, you know, via the policy subcommittee or, um, you know, at a, at a future date to engage in a conversation about reviewing, for example, public comment in other school districts. However, that's not really what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is that we have a board policy related to public participation. And it's pretty clear. And in the transition from our Zoom board meetings to our in-person meetings, we had really faced a challenging situation whereby a couple of community members had reached out and had expressed very specific concerns about their inability to attend in person. And from my perspective, although I, you know, can only imagine how this will sound, it, it felt like an act of compassion to authorize a FERPA waiver. And I see the workflow back and forth. And this, you know, is really neither about workflow nor the extra thirty-six minutes last time or the extra twelve minutes this time or what have you. It's from my perspective, it's more about these are meetings of the Board of Education where we uniquely, the seven of us, have a mandate to represent all students. And it's really for the board to decide whether we want to continue to um, enable other community members to come and speak on behalf of the community members we represent without actually meeting them. You know, I, I really fully support the notion that we need to hear from our community. And we will always have a public comment, I believe, although it's not required. I believe this is a Board of Education and a community that will always place a premium on an opportunity for public comment. But the Board of Education meetings really won't involve dialogue, and they aren't set up that way. This is merely uniquely an opportunity for seven people to come together and to discharge the business of a school district while hearing critically important things from members of our community whom we wish to meet in person and whose comments I think it is counterproductive to have mediated through other community members, from my perspective, especially when we have community members who I believe appropriately do not understand the role of the Board of Education and do not, um, do not respect the way in which we have conducted business and are routinely critical of us. And I can accept routine criticism, really day in and day out. I think probably everybody here knows that. However, I am concerned that we have one employee and we are representing the entire Katona Lewisboro community and all of the schoolchildren. Again, on whom we depend daily on the efforts of the individuals here who are not volunteers and the entire staff. And we support these individuals. We hired them. And we, we, we would do many other things and we perform our responsibilities faithfully, in good faith, um, assiduously, conscientiously, morning, noon, and night, on behalf of every child, including your children, absolutely, every day. But clearly, that is not the belief held by some community members, and that's absolutely fine. And we always want to hear that criticism. But I'm not sure it's appropriate to um, delegate the responsibility to represent the comments of other community members to those very community members. And it just so happens there's, you know, at the moment, about seven of them. And the minute I say that, maybe there will be seventy and they will come in person and they will share their feedback. But from my perspective, having lived through almost ten years of public comment, some of it constructive, some of it painful on a variety of a variety of issues related to our vision for this school district, our values as a community. From my perspective, it would be preferable to go back to normal practice. So I'm simply suggesting not to foreclose conversation in the future about how we evolve as a board or um, create other forums or lean into existing forums as best we can in a pandemic. I am actually more humbly suggesting that we, um, return to policy twelve thirty, public participation at board meetings, uh, which has been, in a sense, suspended. And we've, we've continued this practice up through December of twenty twenty one. And so I guess simply, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to call the question. If nobody wants to speak or I'll make a motion. And if somebody would second it, that'd be great. And if nobody seconds it, that's the end of that. And we can have future discussion and then we can vote. So simply stated, I'm going to make a motion to return to public participation as outlined in Board Policy twelve thirty, public participation at board meetings, um, which has been in place for quite some time. And I think maybe last revised in twenty eighteen. Somebody can check me on that. Um, at the first meeting of the new year. And again, please, I'll, I'll ask for a second. And I leave it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Liz. And if there's further discussion.
We'll discuss.
Yes, please.
So this often happens where in some situations, some change is made that at the time seems natural, you know. And then it's hard to take things back. Uh, it's hard to, it's hard to, it's, it's sort of happens in, you know, financial policy, you know, with, um, pile of money is given out and then it's hard to say, well, next year, we're not budgeting for that because people will expect it. So I, I, I do think it's worth investigating how other districts handle public commentary because they probably don't experience things the way we're experiencing them. And it would be interesting to see what, what is the, you know, usual practice. Uh, it doesn't mean we have to follow necessarily, but I would be curious, what is the usual practice around those things?
And i- i- if you are asking, and, and perhaps you're not for tonight. And if, if you are asking, and perhaps you're not for tonight, but I would be happy to share with you that I am regularly in contact with board presidents from many other districts in Westchester. As you know, I serve on the Board of the Westchester Putnam County School Board Association. I have talked extensively with board colleagues and with the executive director and the former executive director about this practice. And I'm not aware that the practice of delegating representation or representativeness is in place at any other district in Westchester. Now, as to public comment and whether there are other practices or time limits or opportunities that we could build into our meeting agendas? Yes, I mean, and I could speak to at least four comparisons right now. But that's actually not what I'm suggesting for tonight. For tonight, I really am suggesting that we return to our policy, which is consistent in this respect, would, would put us back in the company of our peers. Yes, especially as people came out of the pandemic. Yes, that, that's, that's, that's the learning that I have and that I can bring from other districts.
Yeah, that was reasonable.
I think, I think from the perspective of how do we think about and pursue other avenues, I think it would be helpful to return to the policy. And then we can have more discussion at future meetings about how we might want to think about public comment and how to best use it to help us stay informed and allow the community opportunity to participate in, in our meetings. I think that makes sense.
Is there any further discussion?
I just, I, I wonder if there might be something in between as sort of we're feeling more comfortable with people coming back. It's like, as opposed to giving your, I think there's some value if there's a situation where people aren't able to attend, but they feel strongly that they want to participate in the meeting. And if we're not going to offer a remote option for that, if there's something in between where perhaps sort of the waving of FERPA, but in a more neutral way that I've seen at, at like town level, where perhaps the clerk is able to read some of the, some of the commentary? Because I think there's a value in your statement being read publicly versus, obviously, people are always free to email us and send information. And that's certainly, but that, that's kind of not the same as participating in the meeting. And if you're prevented from coming in some way, maybe that would be an option, just to give you more work, Kim.
Actually, I appreciate that. And I, I, we don't need to engage in a whole lot of back and forth. I don't want to, you know, I appreciate the board's indulgence, but I look at it a little bit differently. I think, in a way, we could say that public comment is an anachronism. And it's been around since well before the advent of email or any kind of more immediate instantaneous communication. And so from my perspective, again, just from my perspective, you know, of course, community members are welcome to email us. We encourage them to communicate with administrators and teachers and staff and with us on phone calls or over email or however it unfolds. But that, because we do maintain this charming routine of public comment whereby community members can come and introduce themselves to us, it actually differentiates it from, I mean, I don't know, dare I say, social media? And that's the point. I want to meet these folks. I want to hear their criticisms. I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with the comment. And I, I welcome public participation at our meetings. But I have, I have a concern, which I really have tried to express as best I can. And, you know, I'll pause if there's future discussion. And if not, then we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. The motion carries. Are there any other topics for board dialogue?
Probably hope I would let it go, but I can't. If a licensed physician said some of the things that were said about the vaccine in public, there's some states that would pursue their license. And there's some specialty boards that would, would seek to remove their board certification. That homologating incorrect information is dangerous. How dangerous? Nearly 800,000 Americans have died over the past 636 days. But 1,250 a day dying. What's 1,250? Two, three jumbo jets blown down every day? If that happened and the FAA, FAA found a way to reduce it, how much challenge would we have for people saying, the FAA is being coercive? They're, they're forcing me, they're forcing the pilots to fly a certain way? I don't think that would get any traction. For some reason, this type of thing gets traction. And maybe I shouldn't have mentioned vaccines, it just stirs people up. But I can quote specific medical articles if they wish. Like, if you're going to quote the CDC, let's quote the CDC. The CDC is very clear. CDC shows that people who are unvaccinated are much greater risk than those who are fully vaccinated to test positive or die from COVID-19. There you go. That's the CDC. It's not 100% protective. No, it's not. Neither is the flu shot. We're talking about 100%. I'm not even sure if the measles shot is 100%. Are there risks to vaccines? Is risk vaccines? An interesting story is polio. Polio was a scourge in my mother's lifetime. And a vaccine was discovered. And it was of great help, but it had some side effects, rarely. Nobody, back then, nobody was questioning the need for vaccines. People were very grateful there were vaccines. Then, as polio in this country became very, 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 very rare, it actually did become the situation where the vaccine posed more risk than the polio. But they changed the vaccine from the oral one that you and I had to the inactivated injection. If the math ever balanced like that, I would join them in saying, you shouldn't get a COVID vaccine. The math is not even close to that. A central erroneous pillar of any argument around saying, well, kids won't get as sick, first of all. I'm sure there's a lot of parents out there who would like, would beg to differ. I'm sure if you went to the ED of a children's hospital and asked the staff there, you think COVID has any effect on children? You get a fairly clear answer. It's the central weakness of any of that argument, though, is that kids pass the virus to people who are more susceptible. And it just all falls apart. There's no such thing as saying, my kid won't, doesn't need a vaccine. If your kid sees grandma or grandpa, they can give grandma and grandpa. Why do we keep getting variants? We keep getting variants because we don't have enough people being vaccinated. So that it's just, it's, it's a petri dish. And we're going to keep getting variants until we have more people getting vaccinated. So and, and then I, then, then we went from the misinformed to whatever's after that. When we started talking about that COVID test, we test water and it would come up positives. I didn't follow that at all. Or I think somebody was saying something about masks being dangerous because they're somehow made with or similar to how gasoline is processed. I mean, these are just ridiculous statements. And are there downsides to masks? Absolutely. Is every mask mandate completely evidence-based? No, there were times when the rules were a little bit behind the reality. But then the reality changes. And it's absolutely true that telling us you don't like quarantine rules or mask rule, it does nothing. We don't make those rules. But you're just talking to the wrong group of people. So anyway, I, I, I don't want our forums to keep going into vaccine stuff. And this is the last one. So I felt like I had to, had to weigh in this time around. But it, I do think, I agree with Alana, I think we have to think about, sort of like we, we have policies around people staying up there, can't, you know, criticize specific individuals. You know, we have rules about what the content of public content, of public forum can be. I think we ought to consider something about, something that's considered dangerous, almost like a spousing violence. If somebody is suggesting something that is dangerous and unhealthful, we should consider whether we want to provide a forum for people to see that. Although they have lots of other forums.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? Topics? And I think we can look ahead to future meetings. This is the last meeting of the Board of Education for 2021. I want to wish everybody at this table and in our community best wishes for a peaceful new year. I'm looking forward to seeing you in January. In between now and the next board meeting, it looks like Finance Committee is going to meet on Tuesday, December 14th, 7:00 PM. Facilities Committee is going to meet on Wednesday, December 15th, at 7:00 PM. Policy Committee, Friday, December 17th, at 9:00 AM. And then we will be back here on Thursday, January 13th, 7:30 PM for our next board meeting. Did I miss anything? Not then, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Would somebody like to make a motion? Moved by Liz. Seconded by Catherine. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Six, zero.
We go to, go back?
I didn't make a motion to do that. But can I undo the motion to adjourn, Kim? Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to go back into public session. Seconded, somebody's got a second here at 11:30, 30:00 PM. Thank you, Alana. Okay, all in favor, go back into public session? Aye, thank you. And now I'm going to redo that motion to adjourn to go back into executive session for individual history, personnel history. Can I have a second for that?
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.